Can everybody attention please? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board Meeting for June 4th, 2019. We'll start our agenda as we always do with any public input on non-agenda items. Anybody from the public would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come up and state your name if you would for the committee minutes, please.
My name is Stephanie Farnham. I live on 12 Woodland Road in Camden. And I have a couple of issues that I want to bring up to the board. The first one being the boat ramp on Route 52 up past Barrett's Cove. That is marked, it's been probably marked the same way for quite some time, but it is very difficult to use it when people are parked in the spaces that are marked. I had a hard time last year. Had a little confrontation with a person at the boat ramp because I wasn't able to get out. And this year, I was lucky enough to put the boat in with nobody there. And what a big difference, being able to maneuver. I have a truck and an 18-foot pontoon boat, so it's 44 feet long. Getting in is interesting, but I did that. But when you go out, they've marked it so that you have to go like this. And when I put the boat in last year, luckily, the boat was not on the trailer. I couldn't make the curve. They were parked all in the spaces where they're supposed to, and I finangled around enough while the guy was yelling at me to go up onto the curbing and up onto the banking to get out of there. It just needs, I talked to Dale Doherty, and he said, he wasn't sure who was in charge of that, but the Parks and Rec told me that it was DOT. So I called DOT, and I talked to Dave Allen, and he said it has nothing to do with DOT whatsoever. So he told me to go back to Parks and Rec, and I did that, and they told me to come here.
So what you're saying is the way they've marked the spaces make it's impossible to move in and out with a large truck and a trailer?
Yes, when they're all parked in the spaces.
When other trucks and trailers are parked in those spaces?
Right.
Okay. Is that middle section you're talking about?
Yes, they've cordoned off the middle section, and up higher, it's for trailers and trucks. But then down lower, they've made one car space and then two car spaces, and then it starts with the trailer ones. And those ones on that lower part are really mean to try to get out of that boat ramp. Because here, the guy was coming in, backing in this way. When I was coming out, I had no choice. You're supposed to go this way.
Right.
But I couldn't. And so, you know, I tried really hard, and I did go, but I was not on the road. And with the boat on, I couldn't have done that.
It sounds like a civil engineering parking lot arrangement kind of thing.
That needs to be restriped.
Remarked.
Yes, and if they could just take away the first one at the bottom of the loop by the ramp, and the next one up to make that curb a little bit better, it would be much better. And it's used so much.
Sure.
And when I called Parks and Rec last year, she just told me to go to the other ramp. And I said, I can't. It's not deep enough over there. And that's not the answer that I'm looking for. This is a much better ramp. The other part of this issue is when, all of a sudden, these moorings started coming in. And right now, there's not very many boats on them.
Again, this Barrett's Cove.
This is right beside the 52 boat ramp in between the rowing.
Okay.
And they're sandwiched, a whole bunch of these people just dropped moorings. And what happened is, last year, they were all on there at the end of the year still. And we were trying to get lined up to go into the ramp with the boat, and you couldn't. They were in the way. And so I talked to Dale again, and he said, well, you know, I'm really not sure what we're going to do. This year, I noticed that, all of a sudden, the rowing people have put up these markers with little buoys like you do at the swimming place, because they were kind of encroaching over too far for them. And they've got this out there now, cordoning off their area. So because we didn't do the moratorium, which I don't know why, but because we didn't do that, I feel that the town should put in the same thing they did on this side, so nobody can get in the way of the ramp. I mean, you want people to use the ramp, that's what it's for. And these people really aren't, you know, there's no mooring field to go by. So I think that we should push them into a little space and make sure that we have room to line up. Especially when the low water is, it's really tough, because you have to get just right. And if they're like this, and the wind's blowing, it's pretty mean. So that, I know that is probably not the best solution, but at least it's somewhat of a solution while the moratorium thing is not happening, which I really would like to ask why that is not, you know, I know Lincolnville did it on the other end of the lake, and you're splitting the lake into two pieces. I just didn't know why that didn't go over.
People had to go out to voters, and people voted no.
And they were confused, I think. People didn't think...
Yeah, there was a whole...
I think they were afraid they wouldn't be able to put their own mooring in front of their own house.
Turned that into like the definition of mooring, and it was a real...
It's true.
So is that planned on coming up again?
Well, you probably, and Taylor's going to speak to this a little bit, but we formed a committee that's looking at the whole mooring thing.
Oh, good.
It's already established, and Taylor's our liaison with that committee, and it meets next, when?
The next meeting's not scheduled, but it'll be in the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks. And they're working on, looking at what needs to be done in terms of safety, in terms of moorings and blah, blah, including especially this area you're talking about.
Right, and that's why we were worried about people just dropping, and we don't know if they're any good.
There's going to be some post-regulation going on. We're not sure how that's...
Can we go to the meeting?
Well, yeah, sure.
Just look on the calendar.
The old ones have been on, there are some that have been on YouTube.
Yes, we try to stream every meeting when we can, so there are old ones up there. Paul Leeper is the chair of that committee. And essentially, now we're at the point where we have a draft ordinance that needs to go be looked at by staff, needs to be approved. There's more steps that need to be approved before it gets moved forward, but we're basically looking at just what you described.
Okay, I'd just like to follow up.
And trying to find a reasonable way to accommodate everybody.
Okay, great.
Always feel free to come to any of those meetings, they're open to the public.
Okay.
So, but please provide your information so we can contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Baba and Taylor, I was going to ask one quick, to get one step further, and is that committee full?
Yeah, yeah, there are, I want to say, seven members now. And I think we're so far down the line that I wouldn't want to add new committee members, but certainly, if you want to do attend and have input, that would be welcome. Yeah, definitely.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Not seeing any hands, we'll move on to select board reports and start your agenda. How about that?
I'm going to skip it.
Cool. Mr. Ratner?
Yes. This is the last select board meeting before Jazz in June, which is, I'll hold this up for the cameras. Jazz in June is a festival that, Camden Jazz Festival, it's the three days of, it says on the poster, three days of music, fun, and food. It's sort of modeled after CIF. There is an all-access pass available, so you can go to all the events, you can buy tickets for individual events. Just to go over the schedule, Friday, June 14th, there is a Blue Cafe show at the Blue Room, at the Blue Cafe up here in the third floor of the Opera House. That's free, that's at 7:00 to 9:00. There is a Jazz in June Friday night dance party at the Camden Snow Bowl from 7:30 to 10:00. That will be fun. On Saturday, there is another jazz concert at the Snow Bowl in the afternoon from 12:00 to 5:00. And then our feature, feature show, Jazz at the Camden Opera House, is, feature concert is Saturday night from 7:00 to 10:00 with a bunch of great headliners. And then on Sunday, it's a jazz brunch at 16 Bayview, the Hotel. There'll be some jazz people playing around town. And then there is a Monday night jazz orchestra at the amphitheater from, Monday night's the name of the orchestra, from 2:00 to 3:00 afternoon in the amphitheater. And if we can make this festival work, it will be an anchor, or sort of a, what's the word I'm looking for? Bookend, thank you. Used it before. It'd be a bookend to CIF, which will give us another festival to bring people into town, bring business to the town, bring people, a great thing for the town. The first one is always the hardest to do. You know, now that CIF is in its like 14th or 15th year, it's incredibly successful. And Matt Brown has put tremendous amount of work in this. It's a tremendous lineup, all of the shows are terrific. So it's Father's Day weekend, so, you know, an all-access pass might be a great present for Dad, if you're looking forward to it. But we really need the community to step up and support it, because if we get through it this first year, then we have a golden ticket for something great for spring in Camden, so.
Could you explain the ticketing process, all-access versus individual, until people see and understand?
Yeah, there's an all-access pass for $99, which gets you into everything, much like the all-access pass they have for CIF. Then individual tickets are available for the Saturday, for the shows at the Camden Snow Bowl, both the dance party and the Saturday afternoon. Then a separate ticket for the feature concert Saturday night, and then the jazz brunches. Of course, the Blue Cafe on Friday night is free, so.
Thanks, Mark.
It's a great opportunity, it's something the community really needs to step up for, and it will pay off. So really, you know, please invite your friends, invite your enemies, invite everybody, and let's bring people out for it.
Sounds great, Mark. Audrey, you said you had a few, I was going to stick to this at the table for a few minutes, so.
Sure. So recently, we were informed by the USDA Rural Development Office that we were approved for a $1.4 million grant for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And that's in addition to a $13.9 million loan that they'll provide us at a 2.5% interest rate over 30 years. So it's a fantastic, it's great news for the town. It means we're going to be able to get, you know, all of the big projects that we need completed in regards to the treatment plant, the pump station replacements, and the force main from C Street to Bayview Street, which is fantastic. That's, you know, really big, important infrastructure projects that we'll be able to complete, and our wastewater treatment plant and collection system will be in really good shape after we finish these projects. So that was great news for the town. We'll get official word from Washington DC, who has to do the final approval of our funding and financing package. But it's wonderful for us, we had, we were told that our grant would be anywhere from $1 million to $1.5 million, so $1.4 million is pretty good.
Yeah.
So we're very happy about that. And thank you to David Bolstridge, who did a lot of work to get us to this point. He's put in a lot of effort to get us here.
You might talk briefly to the financing scheme, which is rather unique for this $14.9 million one. It's not a pay grant upfront, a bond upfront?
Yes, so we will have to get a bridging loan for sort of the initial work that we need to do, engineering work that we need to do. And we don't really start paying on, you know, the interest for the loan itself until the project finishes. And that'll probably be in like a four-to-five-year window, depending on how the project goes. So it's a, yeah, it's the benefit of a federally funded grant loan program.
And from our perspective, it's a win-win-win.
Absolutely. Yeah, and USDA has been great, they've been really fast with their decisions.
Sure.
Oh, and the other information I wanted to pass on the select board, so we have a joint meeting scheduled with Lincolnville, Hope, and Rockport regarding EMS on June 17th. So we're still kind of settling, it'll either be at 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the Richardson Room in Rockport. And it's supposed to be a process meeting only with representatives from each town. We're hoping to keep it to two representatives from each town, though one town wasn't comfortable sending representatives, so they might send their whole board.
Sure.
So the process is really to talk about how do we, how do we, as four towns, discuss what we want to do regarding EMS into the future? And so it's really just kind of coming up with what that will look like, some meeting dates, some key goals or objectives that we want to achieve at each of these meetings, and when we're going to schedule them for.
Good, thank you. Anything else, Audrey? I'm sorry.
You can ask your follow-up question.
Of course you can.
So is that, that'll be after something with Northeast is already signed, or?
I think that this meeting is important for them to see that there's some sort of, the towns are trying to put some sort of process in place to talk about what we want to do long-term. So this is kind of, they kind of wanted something like this in order to sign the renewal agreement.
You see, yeah.
Northeast. So basically, are you saying that we're having this meeting at the request of Northeast?
Northeast is in attendance?
No, they're not going to be in attendance. Not quite at the request of Northeast, but they wanted some, they want, we need to agree to have a meeting with them where the, you know, four towns are there. And this meeting would be about setting that up, as well as other meetings to talk about what we want to do regarding EMS in the future.
I guess I thought this was supposed to happen after we had signed an extension of the contract. This doesn't...
That's what I had been hoping as well.
This doesn't seem reasonable to me. That's what we have our EMS committee for, it's the Performance Review Committee for Northeast.
I absolutely agree. The unfortunate part of the EMS review committee is that one town, with the exception of their administrator attending, they haven't been sending select board representation, so they, you know, they're kind of out of the loop as to what's going on, and they're really the driving force behind.
And they really called the meeting.
Yeah, but to me, it doesn't seem smart to, it'd be one thing if we're just negotiating our contract with, you know, three other towns, that makes all the sense in the world for us all to sit through and have our transparent process that the municipalities are all used to. But we're dealing with a private company here, and they are not subject to faux requests, to any kind of the same transparency laws that we are. So negotiating, throwing out our whole negotiating strategy onto the table...
In a public meeting.
Like that in a public meeting makes no sense. It's, we're dealing with a private company here.
This is not an executive session?
No.
And this, yeah, this doesn't make any, how far downstream do we think this contract with Northeast, we're going to re-sign hopefully soon? Are we talking weeks or longer?
I don't, they, it's been, we're really at a...
We don't know.
Sticking point with them right now.
Before the horse, in my opinion.
I mean, you know, we're going to talk about it a little bit later. Do we want to wait until we get to that part of the agenda before we go into all of this?
I think it's probably a good idea, yeah. Let's do that, because I would agree, I just, I'm very nervous about, I thought, I was thinking this was like an executive session or something, to talk about where the towns want to go or something, but to have on a public record, you're exposing all of your laundry in an open session. I don't get the objective.
I mean, I don't, I don't think they're going to be talking about the contract, but still, I think that everything you're bringing up is very valid and...
All right.
I mean, it's impossible to stay away. You can say, oh, we're just going to have a meeting and only talk about process. Everybody's going to raise their hands, all, that never works. Everybody's going to get together, going to talk about other stuff.
You can't even really discuss what the process is unless there's some substance as to why you're developing a process.
We're negotiating right now, it's most ridiculous.
We're for, we're for, um, thank you, we can talk about it later, or we can talk about it later, but I think again, it's...
I think it's a good, it's good to talk about it during that agenda item, because we're kind of delving into that, yeah.
Okay, cool, well, thank you for that. Anything else, Audrey?
Oh, also, everybody here knows this, but we're going to the Build Main, a lot of us here are going to Build Main Conference on Thursday. Pretty much the whole planning board is coming as well. Very, everybody besides me should be very excited.
You're moderating.
Yeah, that's why I'm not very excited.
That's why she's not excited.
We're very proud of you.
We are.
Your fake choice.
Maybe you won't be after I moderate, but anyway.
That's great, thanks, Audrey. Mr. Benzie?
Yeah, just a quick public safety plug slash reminder for everybody, as we're continuing to clean up our yards after the winter, and it's warming up outside and drying out, if you're going to have open burns at your property, remember to go get a burn permit from the fire department. Or even easier, mainwardensreport.com, and it's free. That way, the fire department knows where people are burning throughout the day, in case it gets away from you. And then they have very helpful tips on how to prevent that from happening in the first place.
Cool.
That's it.
Do you want me to go next, or?
No.
You're prepared? Go ahead.
I am prepared. So we had the, not we, but the West Bay Rotary Club had their duck derby, and it also helped me to fulfill one of my lifelong dreams, which was to spend more time in the Montgomery Empoundment and be able to really do a lot of the cleaning.
Lifelong.
So, you know, when we've been down there for the River Study, there's so much stuff that gets stuck that there's just never enough time to get it. And so we had a really good collaboration this year with Peter Burke from West Bay Rotary. We were able to get, Peter and I were able to be trained in how to operate the dam, which was another thing that was very exciting for me. I don't think quite as exciting for Peter, but he did well. And so the Rotary Club did a really great job also this year. I think very, very few ducks got passed, but, so that first night when they did it, they stayed around, and we did a lot of the preliminary cleaning up right then. But then the next day, we left the rock, we drained the impoundment, and then we let the rocks all dry out for the next day. And it was right over Memorial Day weekend, so having that impoundment drained for part of the day was, we did talk with the business owners, and they were, everybody was so supportive. People came out and said, we've been wanting to do this for a really long time, to get, you know, all this stuff, that it's like, when you first look at it, you don't realize how much trash is down there, because it's all muddy and you can't quite tell. But people, there, this was interesting, actually, somebody ran off with that. I really, but, so this was my trailer afterwards. Just everything from traffic cones to a lot of mops, screens from windows and doors and the pool toys and old sewer pipes, new sewer pipes, lots and lots of stuff. And then, actually, this is especially interesting, decided that, you couldn't really see it clearly enough, so I actually laid it all out on my yard, just to get a sense of, because, you know, people see the ducks, and they're like, oh my gosh, you know, plastic, and I think we should react that way. But when you really look at, and hopefully you can zoom in here, like the amount of stuff that is coming from everybody, laminated menus and silverware and plastic bottles, and this is a, gives you a good sense, you know, so many things that are plastic and are degrading all the time, styrofoam, so lots, just, you know, lots and lots of stuff, lots of clothes, lots of fishing net. That's all, we kind of, then Marcy came over and we sorted it into categories. That's all just like random sheet plastic and just different stuff that's hard to even tell what it is. So that was very rewarding to get, I mean, some of the stuff is probably 200 years old, and some of the stuff was from last week. We found...
Interesting.
It was really interesting.
Amount of stuff.
Yes.
Best year's town before.
Yeah, I'm sure my neighbors were like, oh my gosh, there she goes again. Vinnie actually came home right as I was doing this, and I'm sure he thought, oh my gosh, she really will, like any possible excuse not to clean my own house, just spend every weekend cleaning some other sewer part of town. So that was, that was very fun, and it was a great way of, you know, working together. I think now, after the duck derby, it's, that area is cleaner than it has been in, I would think, over 100 years. There's still more stuff down there, but that was fun. The fish are also back, they're a little bit late this year because of the, I don't know, for the same reason that the garden club doesn't have the flowers out, I guess, that everything is late in the season. But yesterday, for the first time, I saw alewives again trying to get up into the harbor. That was great and very reassuring. I had a two-hour conversation with Chief Gagny of the Police Department, which was great, because it had been a long time since he and I kind of sat down and hashed out some of the differences and, you know, some of the similarities. And we made a lot of progress. I think there are a lot, you know, there's a lot of stuff that they are working on in the background with trying to figure out a way to get into the schools in a way that can be helpful for, you know, maybe not in such a law enforcement way, but just continually offering to be a helpful presence there. And he gave me a bunch of examples of things that they were thinking of and trying. We also agreed, I'm going to help to get a picture of every police officer and a little bio, they're going to work on bios, so on our website, hopefully on our new website one day, but even on our old website, just to have like every police officer, this is a picture, this is a bio, and also just an email address. So, you know, they already all have town email addresses, and Randy thought it was totally fine to...
Great, great.
Yeah, so that if you, you know, you see some, just like with any other town employee, you know, you can have a way of reaching out to an individual person that you had a conversation with, so.
What a great idea.
I'd be happy to help write bios, too.
I actually said Jenna. Jenna would probably be good at that. So, and that would be a good opportunity, too, for us, like I realize, you know, sometimes they just hear, you say, listen to the select board meetings all the time, and, you know, sometimes that's when, you know, we're making, at least for me, I'm trying to make a point about a budget item. And if that's the only thing that, you know, a whole department ever hears about what I or anybody else thinks about this or that in the Police Department, I would think that would be quite demoralizing. So just have the opportunity of going and saying, hey, let's like, you know, get to know each one a little bit more. So I'm going to take the pictures, and Jenna can write the bios, and we'll all... And one more, just another quick thing, June 12th is the Kids Conference for Change at the Middle School, which is something I've been involved in for a few years now, usually with Syria. But this year, I presented the McGonagall River Project, and we've gotten at least one student very involved, I've been taking him around, he's been seeing all the dams, and he's doing his project on that. This is when kids actually turn around and they turn it into their own conference, and they present, and that's open to the public. And they all choose, all the sixth graders choose an issue that they believe is important, and some of them are town-related. And it's a really great opportunity to get into the, to the schools, so I would just encourage as many of us to go as possible, and also the town's people, because a lot, a lot of good stuff is happening. There, and that's that.
Thank you. Cool. Onward to the next item on the agenda, then, would be the Select Board Minutes approval. I'm sorry?
We have a watershed, very narrow window, which they present a summary of their report to you. So I just wanted to mention that, because they may not be able to hang out until the Energy Committee agenda is timed.
Is that on the agenda?
That's not on the agenda.
Well, it's on my list of things I wanted to review with you, is the Energy Committee report. And they would just give you a quick rundown of what they talked about.
I would presume that they were going to plan to come to do their presentation to the town in the future, no?
They did their presentation at 4:30 today.
Yeah, but, well, long story, but I...
We have to do while the school's in session. Students are spreading to the four winds.
Yes.
I mean, I can maybe come...
Well, the reason is, is because, because I would love to come, but I didn't, I didn't even, I personally didn't get notice of until like a day or so ago. I didn't know this was happening, and I was in Rockland at 4:00 for a board, on the board meeting elsewhere. I would love to hear it, but I would love to hear the full vote, not just an abbreviated presentation. I would, I was, well, I had presumed that they would want to come to the town and give the same presentation.
Really, only at the time would you want it, a year and a half's been with the school schedule and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I was there, and it was, and it was great and helpful, and I, certainly the discussion, but...
Can't you give it another time, Janet?
The written part, I think, is what will be ultimately the most.
They don't have that in the...
Why don't we get the written report, and then we could have a question and answer session with you, perhaps? Would that work? I mean, just if we have any questions, we probably won't, but I think it'd be more efficient if you don't mind. I'm not trying to put it off, I would like to see the whole thing, so I could have an informed discussion about it, rather than just a capsule of it, because I was, I really would like to have attended this evening and heard it all.
And some of us were there.
to put it off. I would like to see the whole thing so I could have an informed discussion about it rather than just a capsule of it. Because I was, I really would like to have attended this evening and heard it all.
And some of us were there. I almost feel like, "Oh, my gosh, I just saw the whole thing." So...
I would love to hear it. Well, hear it or read it. And then we can have a discussion if it's okay with you, Janet. I'd love to do that.
I think it needs a whole Select Board workshop. I mean, and whoever can come, can come, but it is worthy of a select, like, just like we're doing with the, with the River Study. It's like, it's going to be a whole thing where the whole Select Board has to look at it.
It makes sense to do this, even to postpone it till...
I agree. I agree. And to do it effectively.
And also to stick with our process.
Janet, Janet, the objective is to give it full attention, not just, that's the, that's the objective, not to put it off. In fact, I'd love to do it on the 18th if we could or have the report by then. Would that be done by then?
By when?
The report by the 18th, two weeks from now?
It should be.
Well, let us know if it's not, but we'd like to get it on the agenda so we could get it in our packet and then ask some intelligent questions about it and probably provide a lot of compliments for it.
Okay. I was just asked to come a half hour ago, so I wasn't there. So, don't worry, I'm not offended at all.
No, no, good.
Anita was reaching for the stars.
That's Anita. Thank you, Anita. But if that's, if that's okay, that's what we'll do, Anita. We'll just, we'll just do it that way, please. Thank you. Back to the agenda. You still stay for a few minutes?
I mean, it was, it was great.
That's what I heard. I heard it was wonderful. I want, I want to read it and hear it.
Yeah, with part of the process. And like you say, I think it is worth us all sitting down. When we do the next phase, we should just be all...
Well, and if we want to, we could do a separate workshop on it with the Select Board and anybody else who wants to attend, you all, and just sit on a table here and go over the whole thing and interactive session.
Alex, are you, are you leaving town before the 18th?
I will not be here the 18th.
Oh, okay. Because I was going to say...
We're going to have a workshop.
It doesn't have to be the 18th.
Okay.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
I don't think we should wait until next fall.
No, I don't think so either.
I mean, something sooner.
No, I don't think so.
I live in Waldeboro and my other job is taking me, so I just don't know what my speciality is. But I would love to...
We'll work something out with you, Janet, okay? We'll contact and work out a time that will work for everybody.
I think maybe we could move up Anita's presentation and maybe they can do some of it now. We've spent enough time talking about it. They probably could have done the report.
I would prefer to read the report and hear the whole thing. I didn't get a chance to hear the whole thing tonight. I don't want to do it piecemeal. I think that's wrong. It won't give due diligence and justice because a lot of work has been put into it.
The students aren't even here. That's...
That's right. You know, that...
I feel like it should be the students.
Yeah, I don't want to do it part. No.
Whoever can be there will be there. We'll do a workshop.
We'll make it work. We'll make it work. Thank you, Janet, and thank you, Alex, for all your hard, Alex, for all your hard work.
Poor Alex is going to have to give the whole presentation. But that's, I guess you like it, so.
Are you going away to school?
It's my call.
Is Alex your senior, right?
Yes.
Are you going to back to college in the fall?
Yes.
Congratulations.
So, are you here at all this summer?
Uh, yes, I'll be there soon.
Would you want to take on the job of presenting it at a Select Board?
I'd be loved to do that.
Thanks, Alex. Thanks so much.
I think it's on the livestream too and people...
Yeah, I think it's really important.
You know, our huge audience out there.
We talked about PR-ing the work you're doing and this is a good way to do it, to get it out on the screen. All right.
Thank you.
Back to our agenda, Select Board Minutes.
I have one note on the minutes. On page four, Kendall, you've written, "Lookner moved on to adjourn as the Water Commission and reconvene as the Select Board wastes." And I was wondering if, is that a comment on...
Probably a motion I made.
One way to say it.
All the wastes that...
Yeah. We are the Select Board wastes. Obviously, the one word was bumped around in the sentence, but I thought, "My gosh."
Good catch, Mark.
What do we do?
I had one right after that. It's just a, just a, on items 12 and 13, Kendall. Those two items were, in fact, tabled and there should be a parenthetical after each one that says, "Select Board tabled the agenda item on each one, please." Just makes it clear that what happened on each, it's mentioned in 13, but it should be on those two that they were both tabled. And that's it. Any other comments?
I make a motion. Oh, oh, one thing. When we came out of executive session, there was a motion...
Yes.
Two motions out of executive session.
Yes.
One was, sorry, I'm getting to the, um...
It's...
One, for the ambulance service contract, there was a motion made to give the town manager authorization to sign a one-year renewal of the current agreement with Northeast Mobile Health Services. And then for the acquisition of real estate.
Good point.
Very good point.
Do you need me to go slower?
Yes.
Please.
Wait until you're done.
Okay, the acquisition of real estate.
The, the board gave the town manager authority to submit an offer to the Department of Administrative and Financial Services for $1 for the Union Chemical Superfund Site in Hope.
$1 and energy credits and...
Yeah, a whole bunch of other stuff.
A variety of other...
Yes.
Very valuable things. I think we were pretty clear about...
You should definitely include that as part of the motion.
I agree. I agree.
Didn't we have a whole motion drafted up that we even wanted to pass that along? Or do you want us to do it right now?
You've, I mean, you've already approved it. We're just making sure it's in the, on the record.
Should be reflected on the record.
We want the record to reflect the value of the offer that we were actually making.
Did we have a, did we know what the dollar...
I don't think we drafted it. We discussed it, but we didn't do it.
No, Bill was doing it.
We did say, you know, and...
Did you get that as part of it too? Energy credits and electric car charging. Was there anything else that you can think of that was part of that offer?
Um, broad menu of options for helping the governor attain her...
Her objective, her energy objectives.
Right. Yep.
That was, that was, that was the biggest...
Energy and emissions reduction goals.
Absolutely. That was, that was a huge part of it. It was an option to take advantage and enhance her directives from, from her office. I agree. That was a biggest part of it.
Or you could just leave the motion that, for authorizing you to, to make an offer and leave the $1 out of it. Just if you're going to say one part of what the, what we were offering, you can't just say that part.
That's true.
Leave it all out, you know, it's all in or all out, I think.
I agree with you.
We authorized you to make an offer.
Yep.
Do you all, what, do you want the record to reflect?
Well, it has to be the simplistic to be approved you to go ahead and submit the offer on the given day and time for that. Or we have to put in a number of bullets that says the whole thing, not just the $1.
Do you want all, like, I mean...
Do you think, Adra?
I think that Kendall's already written them down, so we might as well...
All right.
Have it reflect that we offered all of that.
Okay. I agree.
Seeing that we've given her the most eloquent of...
Yeah, I think so too.
...verbal...
Do you want her to read it back before you approve the minutes?
Well, I haven't. I'm recording, so I'll...
Like, yeah, I'm not even going to do it.
Okay. Let's take a whack. Let's take a whack and we have to review the minutes next time.
Or do, yeah, do you want to...
That's my thought.
Do you want to table them until we've...
I do. I think we'll table, I would suggest we table the May 21st minutes until we get this reflected correctly.
We'll consult with the attorney too on what...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there's no rush.
My apologies, Kendall. I didn't realize it until I was...
No, it's okay. It's okay. So, could I have a motion to table the...
I'll make a motion. We table the minutes of May 21st, 2019 to the next, to June 18th.
Second.
Falls in favor? Five zero. Thank you. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. One is for the request of the use of the Village Green from July 30th to August 4th for the Camden Shakespeare Festival. And that's basically for a performance at 12:00 noon on each of those days by the, these individuals. The second item is consideration of a new vitulare license for U.S. Route 1 Takeout at 254 Belfast Road, which was formerly known as Mount Batty Takeout. Are there any objections to the two items on the consent agenda?
No, I would move to approve them.
Okay, then, hearing, what, I will. I don't, the, having no objections, then, these two items are hereby adopted. And I believe you gentlemen, Mr. Cousins?
Yes.
Why don't you come up and talk a little bit about your, for a second, about your business, when you plan to open and just give us an introduction now that you have the vitulare license?
That's right. You can say anything you want now.
Yes, please. Introduce yourselves, please.
Well, I'm Wayne Cousins. This is my son, Wayne Cousins III. I'm a career chef over 30 years and this opportunity came knocking, so I jumped on top of it. And it's been hurdles. A lot of maintenance has to be done to the building prior to opening. And thankfully, it's all been, you know, done. The floors and the grease traps and everything like that. So, we got the inspection from the city yesterday and Steve liked everything, so it was good. And now we're just waiting for the state to process our application and get Dean up here, State Inspection, to finalize everything.
Sure.
And I think he will. I mean, Fred has been doing a lot of the work there, Fred Blowing, and he's been working relentlessly and doing everything that Dean requested as well. As far as the menu goes, we're not really changing it that much.
It's a good idea.
Everybody loves, if it's working, don't change it.
Don't fix it.
So, I mean, it's, that's what we're going to, well, add a couple of things to it.
So, tell us about the menu.
Yep. It's going to be a lot of fried seafood, burgers, hot dogs, ice cream, ice cream products like milkshakes and ice cream sodas. We're actually bringing a soft-serve machine in on there. So, that would help with production for one and expand the menu a little bit more. Because milkshakes and hard ice cream takes a lot longer than...
Yeah, that place needed a little bit of work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I see the lines every time I went to work because I was formerly at the Sea Dog. And so, I mean, burn and turn down there. And...
I bet.
Yeah, so, I got down there and bring that experience with me.
Do you have any view on the potential opening date?
Yes. Now, we're just waiting for Dean to come here. Yeah. And so, we're hoping for this weekend if I can get Dean up here this week.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, we've been waiting. We've got all our accounts open with all the vendors, so we're just waiting to meet.
Gets a lot of traffic there on Route 1.
Yeah, we're excited, very, very excited about it.
It should be.
Yeah. I spoke with Gary Oliver previously there for nine years. Him and I had a long conversation.
Yep.
He was very fortunate to go get Horse Leather. And so...
Oliver's Bistro.
Yeah, that's what he changed it to. Awesome. And so, I'm excited to go on his footsteps and continue.
We look forward to it.
Oh, me too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Bye, both of you.
This week.
Aw, sweet. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thanks to meet you both.
Likewise.
Thank you for coming.
Very much. Agenda is, oh, an authorization to use dam reserve funds for the Seabright Transformer Removal Removal Power. I believe it's a CMP action regarding three-phase power.
Yes. So, just to explain this a little bit, it's a very small amount of money. It's only $1,500, but it would have to come out of the Camden Dam Reserve Fund because the dam budget for this year has been expended. And just to give you a little idea of why this is coming up now, it took us from the time that the Select Board, a previous Select Board voted to decommission the Seabright Hydro Power Station. It took from then till now for FERC to finally take us off the list of, you know, dams that were to be regulated through their program. And so, part of the decommissioning process is that we need to remove the three transformers, which we currently pay about $137 a month for. And it'd be a $1,500 cost. CMP does all the work. We'd still have, you know, one-phase power out there, just not three-phase to feed...
The three-phase transformers?
Yes, they'll, they'll be gone.
There are three of them?
There are three of them. Yep. I think it was, trying to think of anything else that, we needed to, another point in all of this, we needed to keep power to the powerhouse over the winter because of all of the cracks in the dam. There was still water in the powerhouse. So, if it had been allowed to freeze, it would have further caused structural damage to the, the structure, the structure of the dam itself as well as the powerhouse. So, we needed to keep it heated to a very low temperature over the winter to prevent freezing.
A single-phase power can do that.
Well, and the problem's in taking care of now, so we won't need to worry. We won't have to provide heat to it anymore.
I see. I see. Okay.
So, say, like, hydro power options evolve and we figure out a way, like, something comes up, like, hey, there's this little, there's this new possibility and we'd like to try it again. How difficult is it to get all of this back?
Very difficult. We've, the turbines have been, there's concrete been poured in them, so they're not...
No, I mean, I get the turbines. That, that system wasn't a great one for us because it was, you know, we know the dam was designed for one purpose and it's evolved and then has all these issues. And just the issues will never stop and that's that. But if, say, there, you know, you always see like YouTube videos and different, there are different technologies coming up that, that might make something viable there that wouldn't be with those turbines, but we would still need three-phase power.
You mean just getting it restored?
What are we doing now that I don't, I guess it's my technical lack of understanding what's involved in this?
So, we're...
Getting rid of the three-phase power?
Yeah.
Is it just as easy to bring three-phase power back as it is to get rid of it?
You'd have to bring back the transformers.
Right.
Just bring back the transformers. We rent them now for $137 a month. They were, they can be deinstalled for, uninstalled for $1,500.
Ten months.
So, we could, it's not that big of a...
No.
It's not like, oh, if only they hadn't...
No, this wouldn't be the one thing that would prevent us from doing something there in the future.
I understand. I actually went back and read a bunch of the old articles just to remind myself about it. And I was fascinated at what a slam dunk economic decision it was thought to be for the town of Camden, to get, to be given the dam in the first place. I mean, you can say it was the right thing to do for many reasons, but a slam dunk economic choice was, this was an Energy Committee recommendation. I mean, we just were completely, it was not, I, I think it was good to make the hydropower. And I do feel like if we have the dams, we should try to do something with them, but there hasn't, there's just not a good technology at this point. But maybe Pete has something...
There is good technology. It's just not out there.
I would like...
Technology, taking the transformers now?
We should let him speak to whatever.
Somewhat of the history.
Oh, the history? Well...
And...
Well, right now, we're trying to authorize the funds for the, you want to talk to the electrical part of it? It's fine. Please.
The only thing I would ask is that you, before you make a final, before you make a final decision, Pete, Calagent, Camden, before you make a final decision, I might just ask CMP, what is the cost to replace the three-phase transformers? Because if it was, you know, $40,000, that might make a difference in your decision or if it's like $2,000. So, just to remember that at the time that the, I mean, just, I think it's important to have a slight amount of context here, which is, at the time that the Energy Committee, the previous incarnation of the Energy Committee thought it was a slam dunk, it, I think it still is, it was a slam dunk at, at the time.
Sure.
Because basically what you're doing is you're offsetting the FERC costs, which now you don't have. But, I mean, there's, the net-net, without the, having to replace the start technology, was zero.
No, it was owning the dam at all. Because we bought, we got the dam.
Right. But apart from the dam...
We wouldn't have accepted the dam if not for the energy gains. That, that was, I mean, we may...
I don't think that that, I think basically you said yes to the dam because if you didn't, there would be a lot of people that would be very, very unhappy. And so, it's a question of...
Private owner comes along and they all get together. But, yeah.
But the point being is just check the, check the cost because it could very well be that if FERC regulations change, it would be advantageous to the, in other words, if FERC says, you know, we don't, we don't have to inspect dams to that level, it would be advantageous to bring back.
Let's make sure we get that answer to that question, but we'll still give the motion to approve the money.
I'll make a motion that we will authorize Adra to use dam reserve funds up to $1,500. Is that good? For, to remove the transformer, transformer removals at Seabright. And at the same time, ask the question, in the future, what, what would the cost be to bring them back?
And if it's, how many times more does it have to be to trigger a...
I think if it exceeds $2,500...
Well, let's leave it up to her discretion to, to hear the answer and bring it back to us if she should be...
Exactly, right.
And can I ask another question or do we have to get a second and then?
Yeah, let's do that.
Second.
Okay. Now, comments?
Just, I guess this is more my interest in, because we'd hear a lot of talk about three-phase power and how that's a big issue with the solar stuff. So, what, and maybe that you're going to say this is too broad for tonight, but what are the issues that make a difference in how hard it is to get three-phase power somewhere? It's, am I learning here tonight that it might just be a $2,500 issue of just bringing three-phase power to some site that doesn't have three-phase power?
Well, I think at the, when we, when there was discussion at the, at Sagamore, it involves, it involves wiring and it wasn't just putting in a new plug or something. It was, involved wiring in the, in the poles and things like that. and things like that, if I remember correctly. So, it's, it's more complicated than that if it's not there.
So, there's others, there are other things at Seabright that will still remain there that were involved in making three-phase power available. There are some.
The lines.
The lines. And a lot of the cost comes from the lines.
Depends on the distance they're on.
Okay, so the majority of the cost of three-phase power is lines and not transformers?
No, it's both.
Yes.
Both.
Okay.
Anyway, it, it, it depends on the distance you run into. But anyway, we have a motion, a second, any comments on the, on the comments? Falls in favor? Five, zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pete. Next was a discussion on the regional solar initiative, basically Union Chemical site. Jeremy, were you gonna speak to that?
I can speak to that, I think, of course.
Audra, too. Yeah, I mean, I really, this is something that I think that everybody sitting around here knows how this sort of transpired. There's a lot of newspaper articles about it now.
Yes.
But we really haven't had a chance to kind of debrief amongst the board and Jeremy and I, who've been very involved in this, to kind of talk about, you know, what happened, why it happened like it did, and, you know, where we might want to go next with all of this. So, that's why I wanted to put it on the agenda, because even though it's something that we've all been having a lot of conversations about, we really haven't had any publicly. And I think there's a lot of public interest in this project. So, that's kind of my introduction to why we're even talking about it at all tonight.
Great.
Yes, I think it should be more of a open discussion and maybe answer some questions, if you have some, on what happened and where we are now. I mean, right now, the property has not closed as of yet.
Right.
So.
Could cave.
Could cave.
Mark, do you want to go first?
I was just gonna say, you know, that the question I get most often from people is, is it totally lost? Is there possibilities, you know, what's, if it hasn't closed, you know, how does everybody feel about where it could go?
And how do we.
I mean, my gut says is that, I, I don't honestly, it's not gonna change because, in my opinion, because Camden wants to put solar, this is not gonna not close because of that, right? I mean, it, it's closing based on the buyer and the state agreeing on their terms and, and everything.
Real estate deal.
All in line, it's a real estate deal. So, yeah, I, I will say, things, I mean, I think, Mark, I know you and I had some conversations, it all kind of happened pretty quickly. And I think we wanted, I think in the future, I think Audra and I will be a little more communicative with the whole board. I think things were just happening, happening so fast. So, I'm sorry everyone didn't get brought up to speed on the state's denial of rejection of our offer.
Well, you had to be, like, texting Audra every five minutes saying, hey, have we heard?
Yeah, it was a crazy day.
Was, and it, and I'm sorry about that. I mean, I don't, Bob, I don't think Bob knew, I don't think you knew. I don't know if Jenna, maybe.
I did.
I don't think Taylor knew either.
He wasn't in the country.
I know.
That's because I get so, I can't stand to wait, and so, I, that's probably.
I was encouraged by DAF's response, though, that they're willing and eager to work with the town in the future on other properties. That's, whether or not that's real, or is that just, you know, lipstick?
We don't have any idea what's in there.
Yeah, I don't know. Go ahead.
I mean, I think this all speaks to a much larger issue, and that even, to me, this has become about much more than just even this one project. That what has been revealed is a fundamental and unacceptable flaw in the way that the state goes about disposing of surplus property. They're basically, even though there are really no laws on the books regulating it, they all seem to have been repealed. And DAF says they have this process, which, when I, you know, looked at their response of what, their explanation of the process being followed, was that they put it out on the market for at least two weeks and then get an assessment of how much somebody else thinks it's worth in dollars, and then they just kind of like, it's, it's not, it's, the process is screams of, they actually have flexibility. They do. They get to decide, just like any, my mother's a real estate agent, I see it happen all the time. Offers are made, counter offers are made, very often, just like with any municipal process, or most often, it's, most often with us, and very often in other real estate transactions, the purchase price doesn't dictate, is never the biggest deciding factor. And I thought, you know, the way Audra has explained it, too, and, and the, you know, your experiences with other municipal processes, is, I thought she's said it perfectly in, in a number of different articles, that it's, they, but the thing is, it takes more work to go through and say, and evaluate the highest and best possible use for a piece of property, is a lot more time-consuming than just saying highest bidder. But it would be totally unacceptable to all of the townspeople in Camden if we were to do, if when we have property, we were just to say, well, we're just gonna list it, highest bidder. We, nobody would accept that. And we shouldn't accept, I, I don't think we should be in a place here where we're saying, well, we're just waiting to see what the state does. Even if we don't end up with Union Chemical, I, I feel that we owe it to, you know, the rest of the state of Maine in, in a way, to call attention to the fact that this, this, the state is seemingly unable to bring into their decision-making process policy goals. What does that mean for all the other important projects that happen in the state of Maine? If they're literally telling us, anytime that the state ends up with property, we're just gonna go with the highest bidder in this kind of, like, obscure process. And so, I think, I think we should write a, a letter and be clear about this, that it's not just about Camden wanting our own little solar farm. It isn't about that. It's about something much bigger, and how if we're really gonna be innovative as a state, we have to.
Look to the future.
You know, I know, I've heard Jenna say some very eloquent things, I think.
Where should this be directed?
Well, hold on, let, just email us.
Well, I, I've, I think that by creating an Office of Innovation and the Future, that our governor really, and has said repeatedly, that these are tremendous goals. And we, I think, had this huge opportunity for what I would say is a drop in the bucket to the state, quite realistically, $60,000. I'm not clear on whether we even had the opportunity to make a counter offer. If we had had someone come in and say, here's a check for $61,000, and I want the town to buy Union Chemical with it, or however that would go, or put it, I don't think that we really are clear on whether that opportunity was presented, should it have been presented. I heard from, I think, Audra, that it, the consideration is 90% value and 10% use by this formula. And I just think, I think it's a shame. And I think that, I think it would be nice to be clear, first of all, as I can echo Mark and say that people who have spoken to me about it would like to know what they can do to make it very clear that this was not what, the road they thought the state was going down as far as, as policy goals and accomplishing them, and that they would, would like to see this type of assessment change, particularly with a site like Union Chemical that has arguably zero to one or two uses, quite possibly based on its condition. And we, I think, had a pretty great and innovative idea and proposal that we were serious about. And I think that it, it's really important for us to know, you know, how that can be sort of summarily rejected in 24 hours.
Hmm.
And what we would do in the future, say, we looked at another site, which I'm sure, hopefully, that we will, how we can move on that, that site, and if something like this occurs again, how we still can remain in the game. I know.
I think we need to be engaged. I mean, you know, from here on out on this, there was, there was a law that they, that DAF's had to take every property to the legislature and let them know how, what was gonna happen. That was repealed. So, that might be an option is to try to revive that whole, that law that was repealed. And, you know, I would look to Dave and Vicky for, try to work them to, to try to bring that back. I'm just, I don't know. I will say, I mean, you're, the Office, the Office of Innovation and Change, I mean, that was who we reached out, I reached out to Hannah Pingree right off the bat.
Yeah.
Before we even brought it to you folks. And she responded, great idea. And she was reaching out to the commissioner. So, what happened, you know, I'm not sure all those connections were made, to be honest. It seemed like.
Oh, another offer.
Taylor, you wanna make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, echoing more of the same, and I think the big question mark for me in the same vein is that, we've heard from, I think, through a couple of channels, that the, that DAF's and the administrator at DAF's indeed did weigh in on the decision, and that the governor's policies laid out to reduce, to make Maine's carbon footprint and use of renewable energy 100% by 2050 was taken into consideration. So, then the big question is, okay, if that was taken into consideration and you still said no to our plan, where's the discrepancy?
Right.
And how do we, like, give us an answer on that. So, either, either that's not accurate, or there's a bunch of red tapes that, in a way, that just doesn't need to be there. And that's a little bit absurd to me. So, my hope is that moving forward, we can just cut through it, have some direct conversations with whomever it needs to be in the governor's office, and find a constructive way to make this work. I don't think this needs to be the end of the road, and I think that there's, there's gotta be a reasonable way without bureaucracy to get it done.
Right.
And Audra, I mean, do you want to share some of what has been said about how the cumbersome municipal process of, oh, voter approval, and it's like they don't even know how town government works, and.
That was pretty disturbing to me that that was seen as one of the big stumbling blocks, is that we put in, of course, the purchase and sales addendum that we discussed with the town attorney. And of course, you know, we don't have the authority to buy anything without going to town meeting and getting approval from voters. So, of course, that was a condition. And that was cited by the communications director at DAF's, I believe, as one of the major stumbling blocks. So, I think that from, you know, back to Allison's point about, it's not just about Camden and our little project, like, they're really not making a very good faith effort to partner, deal with local government if they're saying that that's an insurmountable stumbling block to them, which is very frustrating.
Every time, anytime would ever want to partner with them on any project. So.
Apart from the few councils in the state.
We need to cut through that.
Is there any way that on our end, and I know I've heard this a lot from the Pathways Committee about being, putting ourselves in a better position to be able to act on when a, when a property comes up for sale that is very important and strategic to the Riverwalk or whatever. Is there anything that we could do to get approval from voters ahead of time on, within a certain set of parameters?
Yeah, I mean, it's the same, you know, how we have these yearly warrant articles that give you authority to, yeah, yeah, like, you have, you get yearly authority to dispose of, you know, lean, tax lien-acquired properties, with the exception of the tannery.
Right.
You know, you could do the same thing with, you know, acquiring properties that are for specific purposes.
Through one article?
Absolutely.
Is it too late to do that in the town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Next week?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Do we amend an existing warrant article?
Somebody makes an amendment on the floor, you could.
That would have to happen.
Yeah.
Oh, well, we should discuss that maybe.
Yeah.
Because that could put us in a better strategic negotiating.
Because then they could use that. It's frustrating if the governor's saying one thing, our, we're saying, the town manager, the town select board, the, our representatives in the Senate and the House are both saying one thing, you know, there, there is a disconnect there. But if we can take away the one complaint they had was, well, it's gotta go to town vote. If we can expedite that, then.
We can certainly do that, but.
They had a full price offer.
Is that the only thing they laid out as being the, the problem on the package?
That was an excuse, I would bet.
Well, I think it's one excuse. I think some.
I think the challenge is, is.
When somebody's looking to reject something, they're always looking for some reason to say, this is what we didn't like. And that may not be the only thing.
Right, it's time, it's energy.
Challenge at town meeting would be, I mean, yes, you could authorize the town manager to try to negotiate.
Yep.
Something for a piece of property from the state.
Yep.
But the actual development of the solar farm.
Would need to be.
Is, you know, that's millions of dollars.
Yeah.
And which we don't know what that dollar amount is, so it's gonna be a weird kind of.
No developer would ever invest millions of dollars before you know whether or not you've secured the land. So, I mean.
You're playing chicken and egg here a little bit.
It may be hard to do a, a thing on the floor at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I just don't.
I'm just, because of that, millions of dollars that the town would have to commit to the purchase.
But it would be, it would be a showing of, of likely, of course, there would be sub, there would be subsequent things that would have to be asked for later, any kind of power purchase agreement, all that stuff. But it would be a showing of the town, instead of it just saying, well, the town manager, or, you know, the activist town manager and the select board that is totally out of touch with their town, trying to do something that's never gonna get approved, it would be a showing of, actually, no, the town is with them on this. I think it would be.
It's a call your bluff move.
Right, yeah.
Essentially.
I think it could be a helpful, I mean, it can't hurt.
Well, I just, can't hurt.
Unless everybody was know.
Maybe I can chat with town attorney, or Audra and I can, at least on how to phrase if someone would bring something like this to the floor.
Yeah.
That we could do it in such a way that, you know.
We couldn't. Just that, I, I doubt seriously that was the only reason it was rejected.
Oh, I don't, yeah.
No, that's because they had already done, they already had decided what they wanted to do. And they looked at this, and they were like, this sounds like it's gonna be a lot more work for us.
It was a lot more work for them.
It was a lot more work for Audra and Jeremy to, and all of us, frankly, to, to try to make this happen, be easier, just be like, well, I guess there are no options. I think it just comes down to pressuring them.
I agree with you, I agree with you. Taylor, you want another comment you want to make?
Yeah, I just, again, thinking about moving forward, because I'd like to see this be successful in some form.
Sure.
To me, one of the biggest challenges that we, we've seen through this process is our communication with the state. It is difficult at best.
Yeah.
And I think that it would be helpful if we put forward to the state, we would very much like to sit down with the decision-makers, not the people that report to them, but the decision-makers at some level, and have an earnest conversation about.
Whatever they may be.
About.
Yeah.
Our goals, which.
Yep.
Wonderfully aligned with the governor's goals.
Yeah.
And let's see where we can go from there. And let's put the onus on the state to sit down with us.
I agree. Taylor, that's especially important. If you talk about this idea of other properties, we don't want to go through the same tripwire again.
No.
And so, I think in parallel, we can do both. We can, let's get the attorney's input on a warrant change from the floor on June 12th. And, and in parallel, yeah, we should, we should go face to face with these people, say, look, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, we, we don't want to trip, have a tripwire in this again. What do we need to do to, to make sure our proposals are, use the word competitive, because we didn't get competitive.
And once they know we're really, I mean, they should know we're serious about this, but it doesn't have to be a purchase either. You know, the state has a ton of land all over the place. So, I mean, we could enter, if they know we're really motivated, they could enter into a lease agreement with us for a piece of property up in Limestone, 20 acres up there. I mean, you never, I mean, I think the options are, are, we gotta think broad, and options are everywhere.
To our collective position, I agree with everything's been said about, this is a, this is a, this is a substantive issue for the state, not just for Camden. And I think that's what, that's why we're doing a lot of this in parallel. We'll do, we have other options, you know that. We can find options for our, our needs.
Yes, exactly.
I think, I think those two actions I'm hearing, coming as a discussion, one is chat with Bill on the warrant, and the other one is, we really should get in front of these people, and to Taylor's point, and, and talk with them.
I think we're gonna need to write a letter in order to do that.
I would agree, I would agree.
It seems, I mean, you reached out to a certain department head down there, and I'm not sure she ever responded back to you?
No, I, I never heard back from the commissioner of DAF's. I heard from the deputy.
They're not even responding to reporters.
Even from Office of Innovation.
Edie Yen didn't get a response.
Never heard from the Office of Innovation.
Susan Mustafic didn't get a response from, that's how little they're caring about this, that it's, I mean, that, that's disrespectful to everybody who's following this issue, just not, not just the town of Camden, the fact they can't even be troubled to respond to Bangor Daily News.
So, I almost feel like, I almost feel like.
Email someone to the department head that I thought would really care.
So I almost feel like, I almost feel like, we may not get anywhere, but we may need to get someone, I mean, like Dave and Vicky on board to say, okay, governor, we want to meet with commissioners, we want to meet with you as a group, and have them try to push it, because I think we'll just get the same pushback.
I agree, and, yeah, I think that until we've kind of fixed the fundamental issue, which is what we were talking about with the way they dispose of surplus property, we're not going to be able to move forward with anything in the future with them.
Not with them, not with them.
And I think we have to keep putting pressure on them to open their minds.
So we're talking about... Maybe we can, maybe we can meet with Dave and Vicky and at least sit down with them and try to get them to understand this, and that we need to talk to the commissioner and the governor's office.
Yeah, they can, yeah, they can help us to grease this slide. Great.
There are other legislators too that are really, and a lot of people have said to me, Seth Barry responded to me briefly.
Seth is great.
So like, it might not just, it might be more than just them.
More power, the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, good discussion.
Also, you know, for people that are watching, them writing letters in support of all of this and expressing the same concerns is hugely helpful. I mean, Anita did amazing, amazing amount of, she spent so much time, she did a fantastic job reaching out to people in the community, getting them to write letters, getting them to make phone calls, and that matters, it matters a lot, because they don't, you know, the governor, these department heads, they don't get a lot of phone calls about specific issues, so when they do, they need to start paying attention, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Anita, I saw some of those.
I even think the governor became aware of this, I think it was just a little, little too, I think it was like 24 hours too late.
Yeah.
She's probably right.
Yeah. I can't tell if you can see that there are people...
I wasn't, I was talking to Jeremy, no. But I think at least those two actions, we need to...
Sure.
How do we go about, and who takes lead for the letters thing?
So, do you want me to take a crack at sort of like a bare bones draft, and then I can send it around to all of you to edit and write?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, great.
I think it's really important to make the public very, very aware of this.
And then in parallel, we'll talk to Bill and see if anything we can do, if he recommends that.
With the warrant, yeah.
Yeah. Pete, you want to say something?
Very briefly, I think it would be good to make sure that you mention that we're the signatory of the global, the council mayor, so that would be a good aegis.
A dovetail goal.
Dovetail, and that you're, that Kenabunk has followed suit, and you're gonna see this more and more, and so, you know, just use that terminology.
Did you see Audra's letter to them, in the offer?
Yeah.
It hammered that point home.
Sure, but just keep after that point, I think it's really important, because the, at the state level, they're like, the global what, right?
Is that in every, you should, you should hear, when the, when the reporters call her, she, she gets that in every, and, and most of it has gotten into the articles too. I do think you're right, that that makes a difference.
And while I'm up here, just, well done, everybody, well done you, good job, you know, this is a really, as you all know, this is of great, you know, importance to me, and that I am here, you know, with people watching to, to say, you are responding to the constituents in a way that I am gratified to see, and I feel like, you know, with Jeremy and Audra's able leadership, I feel like I, I am convinced that you, you are as passionate about this as I am, and I'll, I'll remain optimistic, and we'll be in the wings, ready to help in any way we can, but good work.
Edie, then...
It was great talking to you about this.
Your statement is important to us.
Yeah. Thank you.
You. Anita.
I reiterate what, I won't reiterate what he says, because I agree with it totally.
Are you gonna introduce yourself?
What Pete says about your advocacy and everything you've done, you've really put a lot of feathers in your caps about energy, and we appreciate it. I, I wanted to, just in your discussion about communication, I, I was listening for whether you heard back actually from the governor's office, because I understand that it was very challenging.
Glad you brought that out, that up, we have not heard back, the governor has proven impossible to get in touch with, and we've not heard back from her.
This is, I'm very dismayed about this, because this is, it comes as a big surprise, I was, I was present at an energy conference that was put on by the Acadia Center in early December, and Governor Mills was the keynote speaker.
Yep.
And she was gung ho on energy, you know, alternative energy, and to, to have her not weigh in, even weigh in and respond to the town on this matter is very distressing, and I'm hoping that in your attempts at communication, maybe we can get to the bottom of that question as well.
Yeah, frustrating.
Also, I was in communication with our senator, Dave Miramont, and my understanding from him is that the commissioner of DAFS had tried to consider all the non-monetary aspects of Camden's bid, and that they couldn't quantify it because the, of the multiple contingencies that were part of the offer. He said it wasn't just the dollar, it sounded like the contingencies were vague about what to expect and how it would benefit HOPE.
How it would benefit what?
HOPE.
HOPE.
That's what DAFs is concerned about, HOPE?
That's what he understood from the commissioner of DAFs.
Well, HOPE has expressly said they didn't want this property, they, but, but one of the first things we did, and I know I'm preaching to the choir, but that's, that is fascinating to me, because all of a sudden, there's so much concern about HOPE. We definitely approached, Audra has a great relationship with Sam, and so we definitely reached out to them, and it, you know, right, and it could be, it could be perfect, because they are looking at solar too, and...
Believe me, I'm with you, but I just thought it'd be interesting for you to...
Thank you very much.
Tell us about your concerns.
Thank you.
Everybody should thank Anita, she absolutely...
Yeah, I read a few of those.
Works so hard to advocate on the town's behalf, so thanks, Anita.
And that's the part that nobody wants to do, it's like, so few people are willing just to take, it just takes so much time to research and then write something that can be copied and pasted and all this, it takes so, so much time, and nobody realizes that when they want certain things to happen, and Anita goes above and beyond all the time.
Oh, yeah, she did a great job.
We got a couple of solid options for this discussion, it was great, thank you Jeremy very much, and Audra too, for all you guys, the time and effort you put into writing all the well-written stuff that's been written.
It really was very well.
We have more work to do.
I felt very proud of the things that were coming out of the town.
I agree.
Yeah, I would have picked us, but anyway.
We're gonna...
Sorry. Onward and upward, we want to discuss a work plan update, Anita, you shouldn't have sat down, but you'll have to come back up again if you don't mind, to talk about the work plan update for the, the energy committee.
Thank you. Anita Brusius Scott, Chair of the Energy Committee, the Camden Energy and Sustainability Committee.
I left out a key word, didn't I?
No, I say energy too. Anyway, again, I thank you very much for your really, really dedicated work towards the concept of trying to get Camden to the point of being, being able to offset all the municipal electricity if we possibly can with sustainable energy, and then some. So I think that's an incredible goal, a laudable goal, and I'm very, very proud of my town for working in that direction. And I feel that our town has a big, big challenge with the combination of this, of the snow bull's electricity needs, which are very, very high, and, and then also the wastewater treatment plant needs, so those two distinguish our tiny town in terms of its outsized demand for electrical energy, and it's, I appreciate your desire to offset I was wondering whether, so I'm gonna go down, I, I've rearranged the order a tiny bit, the, with regard to, to solar work at this point, I was wondering if the select board will be willing to give us a, an update on what main solar engineering, the consultant, Rich Roughgarden, who was hired to consult with our efforts at expanding our solar array or building additional ones, whether there's an update that the town would like to give the energy committee, and, and in understanding that Jeremy is totally on board with trying to find, and Audra, on trying to find another site, what can we do in the solar array realm to assist the town in this effort?
Well, what I was gonna suggest, and some of these, these are good questions, by the way, as we've done in the past, we brought, gone to the energy committee as a whole and provided updates, we should continue to do that on all these matters, and from that, I think we'll have a discussion back and forth of where the energy committee can, you know, help in terms of what we're doing, because we just started the Rough Garden, RFP was just approved, I think, last week.
Hold on, Matt.
When was it?
We haven't gotten the final contract back yet.
Right, but it's finalized, so we're just getting to that point where...
Also, it hasn't begun yet.
Correct, well, we've discussed a lot of the elements of it, by the way.
But we haven't, not in a meeting or anything, I'm curious to...
Right, well, we can talk to that as a, as a, as a separate item, but I, I'd like to try to focus on what, what you see as recommendations for, that you see, and from the, from the committee's perspective of what it can, wants to contribute in terms of work plan, in terms of work items, because there's gonna be a bunch that are gonna fall off the truck along the way, it's true.
So, well, I mean, hopefully this will be a back and forth discussion, because we're, we can certainly tell you what we're working on, but the town is working very well on several fronts that are of interest to the energy committee.
Sure.
And when things are transferred over to the town, like the LED work to real term, we don't know whether we're back here, or whether we're in here.
Sure.
And we need to know exactly what we're asked to do, because sometimes, in other efforts, not even related, but town efforts, my experience has shown that if I'm told, don't worry, it's all taken care of, things actually aren't, so...
Agree about it, right.
Right.
No, that's fine, Anita, that's fine.
We want regular updates and, and just know where, where we plug in, so that's true for the solar array question.
Okay.
We did what we could with regard to...
Can I go back to Rough Garden, or are we gonna...
Well, we...
I think it's good if there's some sort of, I thought the Rough Garden thing was an important question to bring up now, just in the interest of making sure that we don't miss opportunities, and not, I didn't hear a clear answer about how the scope of work from him, where, is that gonna come to, are we gonna approve a scope of work, or is that just gonna be an internal discussion that's gonna happen somewhere? My main concern, or I, the thing that comes to mind, that maybe the energy committee would be helpful with, is how, how do we make sure that the school property could possibly be involved in the analysis there, if we're offering to pay for every...
That's my next question.
Yes, it is.
In the Rough Garden scope of work?
Yeah.
Has the school agreed to that?
No.
Have we tried, have we asked? So we haven't...
There was a building committee meeting tomorrow?
Not even that, no, 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 not, not that, I'll just leave that, I, I mean, maybe that would be part of...
I don't even think we're that far down the road with this, would you say that's probably...
I think it would be good to ask the school to have their properties included in whatever analysis he can do, so instead of just saying, you know, what, what does the town have, and what are the town's energy needs, and what are the...
Maybe give us the three bullets that we, that we put into Rough Garden contract, you can answer those questions as...
I don't have it right off the top of my head, but we are having them look at multiple properties, and they're gonna be town owned, non-town owned, building mounted, land mounted, everywhere.
Right, and I understand all that, but, but to officially get by, this would be a great opportunity to be able to work with the school.
Mm-hmm. Audra and I are gonna be meeting with the superintendent very soon.
Yep.
If he specifically asks.
This will come up.
Yep.
Yes, it will.
That was...
It is a prime opportunity where we got a brand new building.
Yep.
It's a prime opportunity.
Maybe it would be a good opportunity to officially ask Micro Solid Waste to, I know the idea is that we look at properties that aren't just town owned, but that we officially get sort of buy-in, so that it doesn't turn into later, oh, well, you know, the stuff that can happen, especially since...
Council of Mayors.
A holistic approach.
Right, so that, yeah, and I wish, when we're talking about what they're doing, it would be great if that included all the school stuff too, but, you know, whatever. But just here, just let's actually ask, not just say, well, he's gonna look at it, but actually get them to say, and, because if the answer is no, and I don't imagine that it would be, but...
Right, then he's not gonna be looking at it.
No, we don't want to even consider...
Don't waste your time.
Because we also need to know the, the total amount of electricity that needs to be offset, so if, if we could, if we could include, you know, the schools' meters in that, and I, and I wouldn't say just in Camden either, I mean, every time I go to that Rockford Elementary School, I think, oh my gosh, even the kids are like, oh, it's too sunny, I have nowhere to, anyway.
No, that, I think that's a fair question.
Yeah.
I think we should actually...
And then he will, he will then assist us with bid specifications and the RFP, and then reviewing all of those things once we get them back.
I guess I'm nervous now, even more nervous that this is, you know, sometimes the town does things, and then you get to the end, and you're like, but I thought it was supposed to do this, and I don't want that to happen, because I think we should invest, and if it's gonna, I don't want the results of it to come back and for, you know, Anita or I to say, well, why didn't it address this, and then somebody to say, well, if you wanted to do that, it was gonna cost X, Y, Z. Maybe because I know that normally with design, engineering, consulting, we don't have that come to the select board for an approval.
Maybe what we'll do is we'll...
But maybe we want that this time.
Well, you know, you know, we actually, what would be a smart thing to do is we get, when we get the contract back from Rich, maybe have Rich come and talk a little bit, because you know, when I was impressed by Rich when I had more, I even had advantage, because I saw one of the reports he did confidentially for another town, and then I couldn't, weren't allowed to...
He asked us not to share it.
Because it's private information, for one of the towns here in Maine, it was excellent reporting, but he covered, and it, but, but you need to hear that, you need to hear that. I think that'd be a good idea, because we have other questions now, especially with Rich, so maybe soon, we could bring him to the table, have him, and ask him questions, because he's very impressive to talk to.
Yeah, and he was ready to, ready to help us at the HOPE site, right off the bat.
Yep.
So he was ready and willing and able, and he gave me some preliminary numbers on costs and everything, and...
No, I think that'd be a good idea.
As you will, the type of, I think it would be beneficial to have him come ahead of time, so if something, we want to do something extra, we could say, well, let's give him more...
Yes, I'd like to make sure we time it up with the time that he's coming here, so that we're not paying him extra.
That's right.
You know, we want to make, keep his costs appropriate.
No, you mean after the whole thing starts, after we've approved a...
Well, we've already approved his proposal, and he's writing up a contract based on that, and then we've got to sign it, obviously, but I think...
Approved a proposal, but not a contract.
Correct.
Right.
It's kind of like the Union Chemical, like an offer has been accepted, but not closed yet.
Yeah, it's signed the dotted line.
Is there any chance to change it now?
I'm sure he will have no problem coming into me with us, no problem.
It's like, right now actually is the full time to advocate for anything different that we would want to see in that proposal that we don't, like, and...
Yeah.
Which proposal?
Is the school mention, is the new middle school mention in the proposal?
Not even the new middle, I think all of the school district.
All the school district.
Yeah.
Not by name.
And have they agree, like, I...
Audra and I will...
Proposal?
Yeah, Audra and I will chat with Maria about the school properties in the next couple of days.
Those two actions, talk to the school, I agree, talk to them, and secondly, we'll get Rich in here at appropriate time, and we'll get a little closer to talk about it in general, so we'll make sure we're not missing any elephants, we can do that, it'd be a good...
I mean, the contracts, or his proposal's pretty wide open.
It is.
You know, it's not saying that he's identifying three sites or four sites, it's very wide open, so...
That's what's so impressive about Rich, I think, is flexibility to be able to, to kind of loosely word it, but say, yes, I'll include this, 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 no, he didn't mention a school by name, no, but the schools, yes.
Right, and I reached out to him about the school specifically after that.
Yes, he did.
And he was like, no problem, no problem.
They're buying, so it's actually, could be some kind of a comprehensive, like, they would say, oh, and here's how much energy we use, and, and then we would, I mean, I'm saying this so that we could allocate more funding, if we're gonna do this, we should If we're going to do this, we should do it. We should not have to get to the end of it and then say, "Well, we might, you know, let's do another piece, too, study."
I'm not worried about that in this case.
I am, so...
I hear you.
Okay, we'll get him...
Can we see a...can everybody see a proposal or...
Sure.
Sure.
Maybe the energy...I mean, can you just send a copy of the proposal to whoever asked for it or...I'm not trying to...I'm really not trying to be difficult.
Just send it to the whole Select Board and the Energy Committee.
That's fine. That's fine.
Perfect.
What's that?
We'll send Rich's proposal to the Select Board and the Energy Committee.
Sure.
That's fine.
Perfect.
It's public information.
It is. I mean, what I don't want to see, though, however, is micromanaging from different people
I totally agree.
And, you know, in this process. I'm just saying.
Sorry, it's just my personality.
I know your personality.
I'll just be like this forever. I need it, too.
When there potentially could be 12 of you, and we're all saying different things, that becomes challenging.
I just want to make sure the scope of work is sufficiently inclusive.
I get it.
I think also, I know it's too bad that other report can't be shared, but I do think that would allay a lot of your concerns.
I'm sure it's a public document. He just didn't...he didn't want to share it, and he asked us not to share it.
Maybe what we can do is reach out to that other municipality and see if they would be willing for us to share it.
It may even be on their website.
Because I...
It may be on their website.
Yeah, I mean, because if it is, I honestly think that that would answer a lot of questions.
It's a town we all know.
Agreed.
But anyway.
Rest up.
Not near us, but any...we can...I would agree with you, Audra, that report...
We'll do charades so you can figure out which one it is.
It was a quality report, a real quality report.
I mean, there's a whole lot out there that we can talk about. I mean, we can talk about what Camden would like to do for a solar farm. We can talk about what's, like, the whole Midcoast.
Right.
Are there, you know, is there Rockland? Is there Rockport? Is there...are there other communities that...and we can all join in and do a very large one. So from my perspective, just reaching out to the school, the school that's just great, but, you know, Rockland's very...
Yeah, I forgot about...I've had a few emails actually from a Rockland City Councilor that was like, "Let's work," and I tell them I have time to get them.
I'm just throwing that out there.
This is actually good we're bringing it up now because we...
Actually, good. No, it is good now.
Could do a bigger...
Do the thing where you should call Tom.
I'll get in touch with all those same people that we got in touch with about the LED stuff.
Roll it into the EOMAS contract.
Then maybe we need to speak with Rich about...
We have...
Agreed.
A price for a bigger multi-town effort.
Which I'm sure he'd...
We have an action...let's try to roll along because we've got a bunch of other items.
No, it's very helpful because this is the time to do it.
I think we've come to our consensus, what we wanted to...that's cool.
This is the time to do it.
I agree. I totally agree.
I'm really glad that you had such a discussion about the schools because that has been a source of frustration to the Energy Committee, is that this is sort of the elephant in the room when we discuss energy offset with a new building going up in the town of Camden that is not under the jurisdiction of the town of Camden, how to reach the decision-makers and how to convince them to put solar on as the construction is going on. So thank you, and I hope that you're successful in doing that.
Mention the Google government of Mayors.
Not just mention it, but in the next phase is to actually make targets.
Right.
And so it's not too early to say, "Hey, the state's looking to drop..."you know, let's look at the state target and going to the schools and every other department in the town and saying, "What's your plan to meet these goals? Because you need to have a plan to meet these goals."
Somebody from the Energy Committee should go to the county commissioners.
Anya, keep going.
Thank you.
Seriously, add that to the work plan.
Yeah, those are all very important, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep, yep.
But the county...
Anya, go ahead, please.
So the next thing that actually suddenly I just realized...well, first of all, I want to apologize for poor communication regarding the presentation by the Watershed School, and I'll have to take responsibility for that because, again, it was I thought they were letting you know. And then I'm sitting there in my chair yesterday going, "Does the Select Board even know about that?" You know, so it's like...
We're not smart enough anyhow. Keep going.
So I'm really sorry. I'm really sorry about that.
Good time. That was not a good time for them to schedule it.
But, you know, we've been talking about communication.
Of course.
And these things do fall between the cracks.
They do.
And I am very embarrassed about that.
We can...
You should reach out to us and try to schedule a time sometimes, too, that not right before a Select Board meeting that like...
It's my fault, the short notice, but I thought they had sent it out to me.
I knew it was bad, too.
But even the scheduling of it didn't really send the vibe of town, like, "We want to work with the town." It's like...
Okay, so another last-minute realization is that, okay, we've been talking since last fall about putting an informational flyer out to the public, and one way to do that relatively painlessly might be to include it with the tax bills. And so we thought, "Fine, we'll try to get that done by when they go out, which is probably sometime around August, September."
September.
Suddenly, with someone walking up to me at the Watershed presentation and saying, "I'm a renter. How do I get this information?" And then I'm thinking, "Well, jeez, we could make copies of the flyers and put them out on the table at town meeting. Uh-oh, that's Tuesday."
Do direct mail, like...
So, yeah, direct mail's a possibility. So Pete and I are going, "Well, jeez, could we get a flyer together by Tuesday and put it on our table?" So, I don't know. Maybe we could do that, but we certainly could try. But I did want to get information from the board regarding the timing and procedure for including it in the tax bill this year. You need to see a flyer. The draft needs to go back and forth. Then it needs to be printed somehow. Somebody's got to pay for the printing. Who's going to pay for the printing? Somebody's got to put it in the envelopes. Who's going to put it in the envelopes? Somebody's got to pay if it costs extra, although I don't think an extra piece of paper would cost extra. So there are a lot of questions, and even as I start thinking about this, what the procedure might be, I'm going, "Jeez, I don't even know if we could do that back and forth even till the end of the summer." So, I mean, it's one thing to create, print something on our home printer and fold it into thirds and sit it on a table. It's quite another to get it into the tax bill. So I need to know, our committee needs to know from you, what are the steps, by when, who does what, what do you need to see? I sent you a first draft to give you a sense of what we're talking about and a sense of the size. And so it's two pages. It would be what the...
That was a lot of information.
What the town is doing now, what the town is looking at in the near future, what you as a citizen can do, and what resources are available to you. This is a draft. It's not complete, but the ideal is to keep it to two sides of one piece of paper. And I'd like to know your thoughts on that, please.
Can we, Audra, can we give a layout of schedule for this that we're going to implement to get it to you all so you know the bullet dates are to support a mailing? That would be helpful. We're not going to create that here, but we could certainly create and get that to you all.
Can you get it to us by our next meeting?
Plastic bags is not cutting our...
It's our next meeting.
Next, one day, I believe.
It's going to have to be a review of this. Let's assume that documents, you know, has to be reviewed and completed by a certain date, has to be, you know, get to the...just certain time periods or weeks so that we know what we're dealing with, so we know that we have to have something. We've all agreed that the writing is correct by a certain date. And I think if we can get that to them, at least we'll know whether we're dealing with a day, a month, or two months, you know, just to be...
Anya, there's a goal to get this in the next quarterly mailing.
September.
Yes, in the next bill. So when...
Drop that date.
Yeah.
September mailing would be the drop date, yeah.
So our next meeting is the 17th of June.
Yep, I can get it.
So we need to know...
Monday to...
I mean, ideally, we would have...we would have been working on a draft between us by email so that we can discuss that draft at the meeting...
Sure.
And delegate who does what and try to get this done.
Yeah.
This is pretty good, though.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you've got to start, you've got something to start here, you know, a draft, but I think we just need to know, you know, the most important date is when this thing has to be finalized, ready to go to printer. And back off from that to know, some reviews have to go on, obviously, to both sides, to make sure it says what we want it to say collectively. We can back off from that. I've got a funny feeling you're talking about into August, I think, to get her...
Commit taxes in usually third week of August.
Oh, that's right. It is the week of August.
Yeah, and then the tax bills go out. And, you know, there's a company that sends the bills out for us, so it's the whole process with sending anything to them that's going to be stuffed in, so...
You'll let us know that whole outline.
We'll try to do it by next Monday.
I have a question. Are we...is the town going to authorize then the printing of the...will we take care of that?
I mean, I would imagine so.
No, it shouldn't be that big a question.
You're talking about...
As long as it's black and white.
Well, that was one of the questions she asked. I just want to make sure they're answered.
You're right. You're talking about how many tax bills we do, about...what do we do, about 2,000 tax bills or 3,000?
Colored paper would be nice.
3,000. So you're talking about 2,000 or 3,000 pieces of paper, is what you're talking about. But that's a detail. We'll cover that. I mean, we're not talking about thousands of dollars here, so, you know, let's not get hung up with that.
Would be...we'd be correct in understanding that the town will cover that cost.
I thought you were going to...
It's a minimal cost.
I thought Jeff was going to do it. I'm just kidding.
He has not given permission.
Well, let's assume that for the moment, okay?
The second part of that question is, there'll be an additional fee from the companies stuffing envelopes to do that as well.
We'll figure all that out.
We have to make sure that the questions are answered.
So meanwhile, back at the ranch, you have a list, you have a sort of a draft that gives you a pretty good sense of what this would look like in terms of information. Can we have your permission to put together our best draft without further approval from the board so that we can get something out onto a table on Tuesday at the fire station?
Okay.
Now, no, I think...
For...no, not for voting, for people to pick up as information.
You know, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Well...
Because I just, we really should be...it depends on who this is coming from. If it's coming from, you know, the Energy Committee operates...
The town committee.
Yeah, right. If it's coming from an individual, I mean, we live in a public world that can talk about these, anything it wants to talk about. So you've got to be careful who you're trying to represent.
She's representing the Energy Committee.
Well, then it's got to...then the town really has to weigh in on that, I think.
There are only a few things that jumped out at me, like, "Oh, I don't know."
But you're one reviewer. I haven't looked at you.
So I'm fine with that answer. Basically, you're saying that if we would like to get it out in that way to the voters, it would be November?
Probably. I mean...
I'm talking about renters, people that aren't getting a tax bill.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
How do...we're trying to find ways...
Well, if you have a table reserved for the 12th, I mean, the 11th?
11th.
That's a first-come, first-served kind of... They fill up.
I'm not going to reserve a table if this is not going to fly.
It would be just for this.
I think November's smarter.
Oh, I don't know. I mean...
Is there a...
Did you read it over?
Is there a specific reason why you guys want to, other than obviously just being timely, than hitting this?
Oh, no, no specific reason except for we've lit a fire under ourselves, and, as you know, we have certain members among us who are working hard at lighting a fire under everybody in town, and so...
I would just have a little bit of an issue if we sent, give some of it on the 11th to certain people, and then we revised it and put it in tax bills later to other people. You've got to be consistent, in my opinion. I mean, I'd love to rush it, but I think you're...yeah, I think we're jumping a little ahead.
So what we could do is, we could certainly, once we have it ready for the bills, then we can make extras and put them in the town office, and people can pick them up with all the other flyers and find them around, and then...
Electronic.
They can put it on the website.
Thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to sneak that question in that doesn't relate to my agenda. I did not hear an update about the website, and I would love to...I think everybody is interested in hearing an update about that.
You know, that's a good point. We should put it on the agenda for next time.
I mean, I can give a really quick one right now.
Go ahead.
Quick one.
So we've gotten an initial concept design back, and we have a group, three of which on that group are sitting here right now.
Jeremy's on the group.
Jeremy's on the group. Four, four of which are in the group, review the initial design and provide comments, and based on the comments that we've given back, they're going to refine the design and try to get final approval for it. And once they have final approval for the design mock-up, they can move on to content and functionality and...
The color scheme stuff.
The part that Allison and I are more interested in, and Jen is less interested in.
The box, yeah. They don't want to start doing all the work until they've got the color scheme and all this. And do you...should I pull it up? Did we already give...do you want me to...
Sure. So I would have just one comment on that, which is, the website is only as good as how often it's updated.
Right.
So the design and colors are of barely any interest to me.
I totally agree.
But what is of interest to me is that the CMS system, the ease of updating for whoever it is that's going to do that.
Well, that's...we went through a very...
That's why we chose this company because they're really good with that, but...
And Jen is excellent. She works with a clunky, horrible CMS, and she updates it really well as it is now.
Let's make this an agenda item for the...
It would, yeah, it would be a good agenda item.
Okay, I have a quick question. Do you have a timeline?
No.
You just said.
No.
Not yet.
It depends on us...
It's like, depends on all the other things that you have to do. It's like, whenever he's like, "Why haven't you saw off global warming yet?" And it's like, "Well, because this website meeting that just had to happen and all..." It's like all the other things that you have to do with the town that just take time.
Would you be willing to put out a call to the public to submit photographs they think encapsulate the town in a beautiful way to be considered for, I don't know whether you say, the honor of being included on the website?
Oh, that's an ongoing, I mean, we're always happy to have...Audra's been adding things.
Sorry, Bob is...
I want to get back on the agenda, people. You know, I'm sorry, but you know, we're 45 minutes into this already.
Want to talk about the agenda item?
Yeah, well, this is your agenda item, so go for it.
So there's one more, one more item under that informational flyer and that is that we're given to understand that there is some discussion within the town about making some town trust funds possibly apply towards energy retrofits for qualifying homes. And this would be important information to include in the flyer. So along with your update, Audra and the information you'll be passing along, if you could tell us what you would like us to include in that flyer that relates to availability of funding, I'd appreciate it. Or any other town resources.
We're not quite there yet because we're still designing the program and that's kind of another thing as part of this discussion. Once that program's designed, we want to go to the Energy Committee with it for you to input.
The Trust Fund Committee.
Well, first, the Energy Committee to talk about the weatherize program and just make sure that, you know.
Allison may be right. First, the Trust Fund Committee.
Yeah, to use, we have to decide.
Before we can even get authority to do this at all, we need to go to the Trust Funds.
Fairly radical departure from that, which we support.
It is.
But it's normally used as people coming in and saying, my heat's just about to be turned off. I'm in crisis.
So.
Which we'll still be doing.
Which we'll still be doing, right.
Right. And, and the, such a thing as warm windows, the weatherizing the windows, seems to me that if you pay for heat, you could pay for no, not using heat.
That's the, that's the whole idea.
It's the whole idea.
So even if you don't have your biggest, best possible version ready, there might be some things that the town could fund through the Trust Fund that is a sort of a no-brainer. And you don't have to have this whole program in place if we can get our flyer out with some of that information. That'd be great.
Or, or.
I would rather have the program in place and here's why.
But somebody could submit an application right now.
They absolutely could.
For an emergency weatherization, like, that would be entertained right now.
But I guess why I'm advocating to have a program in place is just the experience in Rockland when we did a similar thing. The, the more loose ends you have, the more unwieldy it gets from the very beginning. And this is something that I think that we could get really good participation in and it could help a lot of people in town. But I think it's only going to do that if we've really got it kind of nailed down.
Thank you for working on that. And if there's anything we can do to help, please let us know.
And we will be coming to you with that.
It will be. It will be.
Next item.
And the Trust Fund Committee.
Next item is the CMP streetlights to LED and we appreciate that Real Term Energy is starting to move forward with this. But as I mentioned in the flyer I sent to you, the Energy Committee received a copy of their questionnaire with highlighted questions, but no explanation yet about what you want us to do and what our roles and responsibilities are at this point, since a lot of those questions were really only answerable by the town.
So we went, we went ahead and just did that. So I think the next part is going to be when they come to town to do the streetlight survey. We're going to need help from the Energy Committee with things like parking lots or properties that we own and identifying kind of what, what we want to do with lights that are there.
So when they do their survey, I mean, basically, yes, you need information about where all the lights are that you own.
Hang on, let me speak to that because I have some.
Because I, we, we don't know what parking lots.
So if I remember reading the RFP correctly, that they are going to do a survey?
Yes.
And so that.
That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah. So I think that that, we were a little confused by one communication that says we're going to need your help with a survey, but I don't think that's correct, is it?
No. And I think the communicate, the confusion was that we weren't certain if there was already an existing layer where somebody had gone and done.
Well, there is an existing layer and I just want to make sure that, right, you know that there is an existing pole layer, CMP pole layer, that I have at some length been able to tease out of the system. So it exists, so.
That kind of stuff come from? Where is that held?
It's the, the GIS system. So there is a GIS shape file for all the streetlight poles. And I just want to make, make sure you know that.
It's not accurate.
The publicly available portion of it?
Pole placement is more or less accurate, but there's no.
Are we ready to tell each committee what we need from them? Or is that coming downstream?
We don't know exactly what we're going to need from them until we get a little further down the line.
This is a little downstream item. We'll let you know what is actually needed.
Okay, so the, the questionnaire was FYI.
Right.
That we received. This is what Real Term has asked, but it's not a, an assignment.
Right. Not yet. Not yet.
But it will be something.
There'll be some details that we'll need your input on when they're going through and doing the.
It would be great if one of us was in the meeting with them. It might be helpful.
Or even going around, like, you know, I think they're going to come around and do the survey. So maybe we can talk about, you know, somebody kind of riding around with them on, for a day when they're going and looking at parking lots or areas where it's a little bit more gray.
Well, we'd be happy to look at parking light, lights if, if the planning office would like to give us a map with the parking lots designated that we should look at.
Sure.
That our town owns.
Sure.
That would be great. If you could send us that, then we'd be happy to walk around and, and give you our best guesses.
All right.
Thank you.
And what, like, which should stay and which should go or?
Whatever she's asking us to.
Yeah, I think it's, it's not quite clear cut to me either.
We're not, we're not there yet. We'll get there and we will need help, what Audra's telling me. And we'll be more specific when we get that better defined.
And, and in, in the category of parking lot lights, would you like members of the Energy Committee to approach Walgreens slash Rite Aid about the Acorn lights in their back lot? Or is that something the town would like to do, to gently suggest that they might consider putting in lights that are more like the ones that we bought or out here? Or how, how should we approach, is that something you want us to?
Like an energy use issue or an aesthetics light in my eyes kind of issue?
Light.
Can I ask where this came from?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, are we going to go to homeowners or other businesses and ask the same question?
Slippery. I think.
This is, we're fast morphing into a workshop. And, and I think that if we, by the way, that's not a bad idea.
It's fine.
That's, well, no, it's fine, except for.
Do they need, are there issues with their lights currently and that's why this has come up? I mean, they're like aesthetically or they're out?
Yeah, let's, maybe this is off the, this is like, talk to Jeremy.
Yeah, this, this.
I do think the Energy Committee should generally stay away from this, like, separate out the lighting ordinance.
So the next item is the lighting ordinance that we wanted to ask you about. So we, you asked us to, to state what would be our interests or goals with regard to a lighting ordinance. And my understanding is our goals are to, to reduce light pollution, spilling into the sky, try to come more in tune with dark sky goals, and reduce or eliminate light trespass. Light trespass means the bare bulb, not the cover over it, the bare bulb being seen beyond the property line.
Yeah, but that's not an energy use.
It's not an energy use.
No, it's not. But it's an, it's an item that's of an interest to us.
Sure.
Can we pursue a lighting ordinance? We're interested in seeing a lighting ordinance come into play and we're not sure how such a thing would come about.
Why is that? I get it that many of us are, and I support the whole concept, but why would that fall under the Energy Committee? I think it's, I get it, I sometimes do that where the committees that I'm on, I turn it into like, I want it to be a committee issue.
Let me ask a question. Let me ask Jeremy. The Planning Board for years has been discussing this.
Yeah.
Have you had any conversation with them lately about a lighting ordinance?
Jim Elliott was like.
This would be your area.
There's got to be one written somewhere.
Jim Elliott 20 years ago.
Yeah, not lately.
Jim Elliott talked to me like two years ago about it.
Not lately. About a year ago, maybe eight months ago, I did, we, I did approach the subject with, with the.
You did in a workshop, in a workshop with the Planning Board.
Yeah. And then this last year, we did a lot of ordinances. So we didn't get to that. And you know, that was on the list. Remember, I brought you this long list that I had?
It was. It was.
Lighting was on that. That just didn't come up to the, the top of the, the pile.
Is it, are you at a point with the Planning Board now where that could, that could come back up in discussion?
Probably.
We've, I swear, there's, there must be, or things written there.
Pete gave me a draft.
But even with the Planning Board, have you, have you ever talked to Jim Elliott about this?
I have.
You have?
Yeah. Yep.
I mean.
It's a 20-year project.
Yeah.
Why?
Why was it so long? I don't know.
What's going on? I mean, it's almost like.
Let's talk about going forward. What do we want to do with, what, do you want, do we want to bring this attention to the Planning Board and reinforce it?
Sure. That's fine.
That's fine.
Let's read over some history of the discussion.
Do we need to have a workshop with the Planning Board to discuss this activity?
No, put it on an agenda.
All right.
Coming up, we'll talk about lighting ordinance.
I think it's smart.
History of it, because it's, it's like been decided that this should happen and basically it's, you don't need to start from zero.
No, but I'd rather just put draft a new ordinance and take it through the process.
That's fine.
That's what I'd like to do.
That should be, that should be the action. That's what we'll do.
I think, I think the procedure we have now with Jeremy sort of being involved in the process is, is expediting things a lot quicker than they were before. So I think if we start fresh.
Let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. And I think I heard that you'd rather the Energy Committee not be involved in this.
Well, you can still come to Planning Board meetings, but I, I think that, I agree. I don't see it as an energy related thing.
I think coming as, as interested.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Meeting and express your opinion and not really from the perspective of the Energy Committee because it's not an energy.
I'd just like to know that when you guys advocate for something, it has to do with, with reducing.
That's fair enough. Fair enough. Appreciate that. That's very helpful.
Yeah.
So the next item, number eight, well, I don't know what number, because I changed the order. Protocols whereby new companies locating in Camden would inform the Planning Board of proposed energy use and energy savings measures. This could be a slippery slope, but there are certainly potential, potential companies that have never existed before that might use a lot of energy in pursuing their goals and, and producing their product. And that would certainly impact Camden's energy footprint.
Sure.
And so do you want to see some review process put in place that relates to energy, new energy uses or high energy uses? And if so, how? And if so, who does it?
I think you would want to see also what are other jurisdictions doing in this regard also in parallel and what have been the impacts when they've done it.
Towns?
Also, we're going to have a licensing process.
I can tell you in Utah, this happened and it severely backfired on a town out there in terms of, they're like us, very limited business, our businesses, retail, hospitality kind of things. Yeah, I know they, somebody might talk about a marijuana facility or something like that, which is an energy hog, by the way, and those things that may occur. But I, I think some of the research that could be done is that by the Energy Committee.
Maybe, maybe the first step would be.
Absolutely.
A research report about what's happened around the country with similar.
Selectively, selectively. And I can help you with that.
So if Google decided they wanted to build a.
Data center?
A data center in Camden.
Don't hold your breath.
You know, that's a big energy draw and that's obviously an extreme and unrealistic example, but, but.
But that's going to happen somewhere anyway. So I don't really, from a, from a world perspective and a carbon footprint perspective, I don't want a, the result to be that we drive things out of Camden so they can be somewhere.
That's correct.
If there are ways we can encourage.
That's correct.
I think community goals rather than mandates would be my.
So.
Like people are going to smoke marijuana probably and.
Right. But what, what would, what, so you're saying we need to do a little bit of research as a committee to figure out?
I think that, you'd be surprised how much great data there is out there about it because to Allison's point, we keep losing and it's because it's very difficult to measure the amount of footprint that we cause just by living. And not, not, not on the meters of Camden. It's not shown on the meters.
Right, just using the phone, right?
Huge. Taylor?
Am I, am I correct that in, and Anita's hypothetical, that there's nothing precluding the Planning Board from asking those questions in their process now anyway?
They can essentially ask anything they want during the process, absolutely. And they do now to some extent. I mean, just.
They, just going back to lighting, they.
They do.
Hear that, they'd say, you got to do dark sky.
And they, and they voluntarily, and a couple that I.
That's kind of my point, like, you know.
Yeah.
I'd say the, there's an energy code that applies statewide.
Yes.
And I know some people may not appreciate the energy code or think it goes far enough. We're at a 2009 energy code. My gut says, I'm on the MUBEC board. My gut says is we'll be going probably up to the 2015, June.
The IBC?
IBC, maybe even the 2018. And energy code looks at consumption. It looks like efficiency of equipment, mechanical equipment. That's all in the energy code. So I think people think that nothing's being done to address energy consumption and efficiency of equipment. It is built into the energy code. It is there.
That's correct. That's great.
And I think we need to understand that. I will say, any commercial project comes into town, they have to do what's called a comp check.
Yep.
So they, their engineers have to look at what their building envelope is, their glass, their equipment, their lighting. They look at all of that and it has to fall within the code.
The key, the key ordinance you want to research is Title 24 in California.
Oh, yeah?
And that is the be all and end all on everything that's built anywhere. You have to file a Title 24 application, which is totally, all it's about is how much energy you're using and why, and it is limited. If you go beyond that limit, you're going to have to go through special permits. That's, that's the bellwether of, you know, does it apply to Camden? Yeah, it does. It does. But it's usually above a threshold. That's the one you want to research.
So you would like us to do that research and present it to the board and make suggestions?
Yeah, I think that'd be a great idea. It'd be great import. You'll find, there's a lot of great information out there on this.
Which is a great segue to the last question.
Yeah.
The Conservation Commission has.
I knew that was coming up.
Gets interns. And we would like to know.
I want to.
Everybody wants an intern.
So we'd like to know how this process takes place so that we can play.
And in the future, it will take place. We won't do any.
Different way.
But that's, yeah, it's, it's complicated.
I'd say process is a.
It had always been before, when I was on the Conservation Commission, where they would apply for a grant. And, and they would apply for a grant and they would get either grant funding.
That's right.
Or sometimes not all the grant funding would come through, but there was already such a clear proposal that had been determined to be, you know, worthy of an intern. And then the town decided, okay, well, they didn't get all the money, but we still want to do this, so let's do it. This time it was more like a little bit looser. And I think that was, it's always best to have a plan before you have, you know, an agreed upon plan and then the intern. So I would think that if the Energy Committee were to come to us at some point with, you know, an appropriate time in the budget making.
Do some research about what we just talked about.
Right, like, you know, something, a proposal that says this is what an intern would do. It doesn't end up, and, you know, can we find that?
Well, one, one of the things that I've learned from taking my daughter around to schools, colleges, is that most of these schools have quite a lot of money.
They do.
To foster unpaid internships. So in other words, if we get on the list at these, you know, sort of elite New England schools, what we get is a free intern that they pay.
Which is for credit.
Well, well, no, not even credit. It's just, it's just they have a chunk of money to give to students to do these internships. So in other words, they get paid by the school to do internships that the entity that is having them intern pays nothing. So it's just a question of writing some sort of a brief, getting it to the schools. And I think that would be a fantastic role for the Energy Committee to write something up and to reach out to schools and say, hey, we've got this internship. Who you got?
That's funny.
Say, the first two years, this is the third year the Conservation Commission's worked with an intern. The first two years, they did, they did grants to get those interns.
And so is that a process that takes like nine months?
It didn't take that long.
It takes time. It's a lot of work.
But you might want to, again, start by finding out what's available, like Pete said.
If that's available. Usually those through colleges are funded by corporations, by the way. And Worcester Tech does that, Myel and Modern in Massachusetts. And they get funded by big corporations to pay the students.
But there's a chunk of money.
It is. It is. And nothing wrong with looking at that, absolutely. This is, all comes down to financial, Anita, you know that. And we really need to look at interns as being paid somehow, not as we have in the past with grants or this kind of funding thing, because we don't have the budget to have to. You're not the only one that's asked for support and help. Some of it's financial, some of it's from committees. Some of it's financial help.
I do think with the, not this year, but with the upcoming year.
Yes.
We need to have a more specific process.
I totally agree. I totally agree with you.
I mean, there's a lot of problems with the way that it's happened this year. And I think that Anita's question's fair. And I think it's more fair if we have a more.
That makes sense.
Open process that any committee could apply to and.
We, we have to set a policy.
We do.
It all comes down to the plan first.
Yeah.
And second.
I also think the need, the, you know, I think the grants ask for what's the intern going to do.
Yeah.
You know, we just need a body. We need, why is this, why is this job important?
So the, the Conservation Commission has sort of been like getting your feet wet on the process and finding out where the.
Is that as the model?
Do not use as the model, please.
Just that won't be, maybe go back to the first two years of.
Yeah.
Grant applied for, with very clear objectives.
Okay.
In one or two cases, the town pitched, there wasn't as much funding that came through.
Which I would agree with Pete. I think the colleges thing is, is part of that model. That's the model we have to look at, setting a policy for.
Potentially.
It does. It does. It does.
Because they're going to want, like, what's the process?
Right.
That's right.
Just to go back.
First to us too, before you've come up with an internship.
Yeah, just that, the first two years, the Conservation, the first year was looking for somebody, the, the two jobs they're looking to is one, do a report on the Emerald Ash Borer and how the town was going to be affected by that. They did a study of all the ash trees in town, major ash trees. And the other thing was sharing with the, the Public Works, going around and doing the drain in the houses.
Right.
And the intern went house to house to house to house for two years. And that was an incredibly useful process and, and did a lot of things to help in our town pollution. So identifying the need, I think will go a long way. And they did that.
I, I would just suggest, I agree with Mark, I, but I think we just investigate these act, no, it doesn't hurt to investigate anything, find out what the process is and we'll talk about it, you know. But we, we, we collectively need to set a policy better than we have in the past in terms of these interns.
Great, thank you. It sounds like you're getting more homework than I am today.
No, I don't think so. I don't think so, but thank you.
Last item is.
What's the last item?
Just, just the information that, that we lost two members of the Energy Committee this year. And our school student, Alex Fack, from, from Watershed is graduating and moving on. And so just wanted to get the word out that we've got some vacancies. So please do accept applications that you might receive. And we really have liked having a student on the Energy Committee. And I think if, if it makes sense to you, we'll, we'll pursue having one of those three spaces be a student. Is that all right with you?
I was going to say.
You've got two town students.
I was going to say, you know, I just saw in great presentation, five students and hopefully.
Two of our Camden residents.
That would be great if.
I'm right, they explicitly said, I think, I've heard that they don't want to come and even present. So I think making sure we, they don't want to come and present, they don't have time.
Right.
So finding students that can, that do, you know, definitely have the time. And I think putting it out there, we're, we're about to do the committee, what do we call it?
Hi.
The committee.
Well, it's both--
Renewal, and when we advertise for all the different vacancies. And I think maybe we should try just to do a little bit more than our normal Camden Herald, whatever it is, like really push to everybody, like kind of like what happened with the Harbor, there were a couple stories, and everybody was like, oh, there's Harbor, there are Harbor Committee vacancies. I think a lot of people don't, it doesn't get on their radar that there are opportunities.
The, the Energy Committee has been extremely conscious of the important role that students, high school students have played in our work and--
Sure.
Really outsized role in terms of the global covenant mayor's work. I think that points out, well, first of all, it, I've always been hugely gratified by that participation. And I feel that any and every student that you can get involved is breeding committed, involved citizens for the rest of their lives.
I'm saying get it out to, like to, not just--
I'm suggesting--
--the students that happen to already know about it, but send something out to the public school too.
I'm suggesting the Camden, when they have committee vacancies, they advertise on the bulletin board at the high school.
Yep, yep.
And say, we would appreciate the input from students. Because if we can get students to be, as you know, if we can get students to be active at the town level, the town is not so much of a black box in terms of how it operates, and they can feel empowered and therefore move on with their lives, understanding that they can play an important role in local government.
I think both of the students, this year Alex and the year before, one of the--
Pete Galway.
Yeah, Pete, were terrific. They were at all the meetings and very committed and very involved. So I think the Energy Committee's done a great job of--
Select Board could put that in their hats and think, okay, let's look, let's let the high school know and see if there are any students that want to come forward.
But that's what I'm saying, we should try harder.
Not just Watershed, but also Camden.
As a 30-year teacher, there's nothing that motivates students more than saying to them, we need you.
Right.
And so the message coming from you that says, we need you--
Right.
--is liable to resonate.
You know that. Thank you, Anita. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pete. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
On to a discussion--
EMS.
Going full circle. EMS, now I don't even remember what it means anymore. Of the, well, let's bring it up again.
So-- Right where we were.
Wait a minute, give her a chance.
Go, please let it, I know.
Audrey, can you leave this into it?
So we're sort of at this impasse with Northeast Mobile Health Services in renewing our current agreement for an additional year.
Right.
And the reason we're at an impasse right now is they know, because we've been very public about it, that we would like to look at our options more broadly, not for this year coming, starting, you know, this financial year coming, starting July, but perhaps after that, we want to have a, you know, a better understanding of what our options might be. And we've talked about what one of those options might be in a little bit of detail in regards to the meeting that we had where we invited representatives from the city of Rockland to come and talk about--
Sure.
--what a regionally run, or municipally run regional system might look like. So those conversations have kind of got them thinking about their long-term roles, or long-term role in the towns. And they're kind of at a, you know, they would like to get us into a longer-term agreement than just a year extension as a result of all this.
Obviously.
Yes. And so through those conversations, we made it very clear that, you know, we don't, we're not in a position where we can sign a five-year agreement. It would have to go to town meeting, where, you know, our, particularly the Camden Select Board is not in a position where they'd be willing to do that right now, given that we're looking at, you know, our options more broadly. It took some time to get that through to them, that they wouldn't, you know, they, we wouldn't entertain that in Camden. And Rockport said likewise, we wouldn't either, because we do want to look at our options. Our warrant is set for town meeting, so it's off, you know, five years, we can't do that now. The smaller towns are a little more willing to look at a five-year agreement without kind of the amount of scrutiny that we're applying to--
Sure.
--our future options. So that's kind of put us in an impasse also with working with our partnering towns towards this goal of a one-year renewal. Because some of the smaller towns very much are advocating for some sort of longer-term agreement, whereas us in Rockport want to go down this other path of looking at our options.
Right.
So that's why we're at kind of an impasse as to negotiating with Northeast over the one-year agreement and also agreeing with the three other towns that we have this contract with.
Are we at an impasse in the negotiation right now in terms of long-term contract versus a one-year contract?
No. I think the smaller towns know that we're not going to budge on one year versus longer term. They've got that message loud and clear, but it's still, it's still, how do we, the impasse, I would say, is they don't even really want to start having a conversation about looking at other options where we do.
So here, my, I guess my take on it is, I really think that we need to look at the negotiation with Northeast right now separately from what we're doing in the future. Because otherwise, this process is going to become very muddy unnecessarily.
And I feel like the problem is, is that Northeast has already gone there, and they want some sort of--
That's right.
They're, they're using that as leverage to not sign the one-year agreement. They want some sort of commitment from everybody that we're going to have a process to look at something.
Yeah, so I guess my, just speaking for me, my feeling, like we've made it clear, like we'll sign a one-year extension based on the, the previous terms of the agreement that we already operate under. We're not going to agree to, to have a process meeting where Northeast is dictating the terms of the agenda, but I, I personally feel like it's very important for all four towns to sit down together and talk about what the future of the provision of EMS looks like in our community. Of course that has to happen. It's, it's, there's no way that you could move forward with a new plan in anything unless all of us sit down and talk together. So like, it's--
Sure.
You know, I feel like it's being overplayed a little bit, trying to make this meeting happen quickly.
Yeah, well--
In conjunction with the contract.
Right.
I guess like, just, just quickly to finish, like--
Sorry, sorry.
I really, I think we should focus on getting this contract finished up.
Yep.
And the terms that we can all agree to, and it may take some time.
Yep.
Knowing full well that, you know, maybe it's not June 17th, maybe it's in July.
Maybe.
Where all four towns, and again, I agree, all four of us should sit down and talk.
Sure.
But I don't know that it's wise for us to be having that conversation at that level until we have figured the contract out.
Just to summarize one thing before, Mark, if you don't mind. When we, Audrey and I wrote, we all got copies of, a letter to, a response to a letter from another town, part of the discussion was about, one, there's elections coming up, there are new, a couple of towns have new select board members, they're going to be coming on board, there's a learning curve to that. Two, we're, but bottom line, we're in a negotiation right now. And it's kind of a very tricky time to be, to your point, very tricky time to be sitting down and talking about it, because it's going to morph into a discussion about what you just said. We're, we're very much, I'm going to play small town, we are a small town in general terms, but other smaller towns that, that, that they have a, a strong interest in, in a certain direction. That's going to come out in those discussions. You, you can't afford that during negotiation, in my opinion. Mark?
I was going to say a couple things. Number one, I think we're, we're all, we've discussed that we're interested in seeing what other alternatives we have. Maybe we can improve service involved with the fire departments and, and multiple town situation, which might be good for all municipal services. I find that I'm disappointed in Northeast because they've taken the opportunity to sort of, instead of put their best foot forward and sign the one-year agreement and do their best job, because there's no telling if we can afford to move forward--
Right.
--with something else, what we can do. They have gone the opposite direction, have tried to dictate, tried to coerce other towns into going long-term and try, having them to force us into doing what we're not interested in at this point. And they've been asked, and Audrey said today, they've even asked to get out of their penalty part of their contract if they don't provide the services that they need. Which seems to me, if you're negotiating for the future and you're looking to hold on to a business, they've gone about it exactly the wrong way.
Yep.
I don't see any reason why we should sign any more than a one-year contract at this point, especially with the bad faith they've shown in terms of wanting to move forward.
I want to take that and put it into a letter and send it to them.
I think it's, I think it's real important.
Well, but to the, are we talking, what are we talking about? Are we talking about two things here? We're talking about a meeting for June 17th and parallel with, this negotiation is going to continue with Northeast. Now, who or what is leading that negotiation? Is there leadership in negotiation?
There, they have a board.
Negotiation by committee doesn't work.
Well, that's the thing. They've got a board as well that's involved in all of this, Northeast.
Yes.
So--
And all, where, all their meetings take place.
Well, like you said, it's not.
Wherever they want.
Whether it's available or--
I would, I would say probably not.
I'm making a point, I assume.
You're making a very good point.
Yeah.
They're not.
Strongly agree with Taylor that we need to get to a place where we have secured this contract and then begin really hammering and seriously, seriously into the future. I, I am disappointed in Northeast as well. I think Mark makes very valid points. I also think we have to sort of be aware of, of, that we need this service to continue for the year we may not be able to, for the future, I mean, a year and then some perhaps. But I think having a meeting on June 17th is putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I, again, just to come back to, I think, you know, it seems obvious, but perhaps it's not. Mark really hits on an excellent point, like the reality is, no matter how much work and what our opinions are about what the future of EMS should look like, the voters are our legislative body. And ultimately, a decision that big is going to lie with the voters. And we, you know, in the, in the brief amount of detail that we've heard about what an alternative provision that we've, with Rockland might look like, we know it's going to be more expensive. So, you know, when and if that went to voters, they may very well look at what we have now versus what a different decision, a different situation might look like, and it may not pass. And the reality is, Northeast has an opportunity to show us over the next year that their service is what they bill it to be. So I guess I would, you know, again, erring on the side of cautious optimism, hope that they get that message and, and see that we can hopefully work together as best as possible, at least over the next year. And then I also really want the message to be very loud and clear to the other three towns, particularly our two smaller partners, that we, we intend on all four of us sitting down. I think it's very important for us to have a front conversation about what all of our goals are. I think that that, you know, goals is, is an important word that's been thrown around that I think is paramount. But negotiating our contract with Northeast now to see where we are for the next year is priority number one, getting that sewed up. And then, once we know that that's in place, as Jenna has suggested, then let's have the four towns sit down and talk about what we're going to do down the road.
We can't let, if we had a mechanical subcontract, we're doing work for the town, and we decided to evaluate alternative means of providing the same service, I, I wouldn't expect that company to pull what's going on right now. I, we can't be held hostage to look at what's best for the town. We don't know. I would agree with Mark too. I, I have qualms about the cost of this other model, but I want to see it. I, we owe that to the voters and taxpayers of Camden to at least do the evaluation. It may crash, it may not. But we need to, and this was summarized, I just want to, I just think it's, we, we can't let any entity hold us hostage. And we, and we need to decide what our position is going forward with Northeast in terms of this negotiation. My concern is, I'm not sure there's an individual, you or somebody, leading this negotiation in coordination with the other town managers, as would, would normally happen like on medical solid waste, when we have four towns involved and the town managers are cooperating, working together to negotiate a contract. I don't think that's happening here.
I mean, it sort of is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the one other thing that we need to be clear on, I'm not sure about the, the EMS experience of either the town managers or the select board people in the other towns. But Taylor and I have some substantial experience with EMS. And the one thing we're looking at, and I think the other towns should understand this, is we're looking to provide the best service for our people that we can. We're not looking, it's not personal, it's, it's a very professional look at what's the best service we can provide for our people.
Yep.
And it's not personal at all. And, and, you know, the other towns may think that we're trying to browbeat them or do something like that. And that's not it. We're just looking to go, you know, there may be a better way for all of us to, to have the best service we can provide for our people. And that's the way I'm looking at it, and I think, I know that's the way Taylor's looking at it.
Yes.
And that's what I hope people understand is--
I'm afraid--
--we're not looking to do something different or unique. We're looking to provide the best service we can. It may be, you know, forward-going, if, if Northeast really puts in an exceptional year and proves that their service is, is, you know, the most effective for what we can afford, then, you know, they, they've done their job, you know. Or maybe there is another answer, but we don't know that yet. But I'm incredibly disappointed at the way they've approached it. It's not how I would ever do a negotiation.
What do you recommend, Audrey?
Also, I mean, sorry, I, I just have to say a few things about, I don't know how I just got out of the strong mode here, but this letter from Bill Kelly raises so many more issues than have even been talked about. And, I mean, it's from, shoot, I got out of it here, but this--
Bill Kelly, our attorney.
You know, what they're, what they're trying to do raises like huge red flags.
Yep.
It's, there's all kinds of stuff. Right now, in, in towns can individually end service. We can, we all sort of operate a little bit separately.
Yep.
We have individual contracts, right?
Right, it's not an intra-local agreement.
Right.
Right. And, but there, I mean, this is a complete effort to force us into, then Cam, I mean, Camden, they're doubling down on this model of like trying to pit us against--
Other towns.
They've like, I mean, it's just exactly what Audrey said, and they're not even--
Yep.
It's, it's actually been stated. It's not even that there's just speculative. They're actually putting that in contracts, saying what they want is to be able to make sure that Camden can't, or any town can't get out of the contract without, and service without the other three towns also agreeing and writing. I mean, I think what there, Bill says there, I've not been involved in the negotiations, but I'm reading this document, I would be concerned and seek assurances that Northeast Mobile Health is financially viable. They're flashing red lights when comparing the existing contract to the pro six-year contract.
Yep.
I mean, what are we, it's, this is, do we even need to go further than just what we're doing now and to see, when he says that he thinks we should seek assurances that they're financially viable? I mean, that's a huge issue if, if we even do sign a one-year contract, and they're about, they're showing signs that they're about to fold.
I, I don't know, but it's really, what I read is saying is that any company that's looking for a long-term thing is scared stiff. They're not going to have you anymore, and the income from you, in this case, to Camden, and that's, they're financially vulnerable, that's why I read that. But I, I keep coming back to this, we're in a negotiating phase. What are we negotiating? Who's negotiating? You're negotiating for Camden, and what does that--
In my, it's very, very simple.
Perfect.
It's very simple.
That's right.
We want an extension of our current agreement for one year.
Right.
Period.
That's it.
Right.
It's very simple.
Just us. I don't, I don't want it to be combined with--
We can't with other towns.
None of that stuff about--
It can't. I mean, it can't, because we all have individual--
Our current agreement and extension of our current agreement.
Yeah.
Ask them even for, for like a quote on, you know, if, if certain towns are bound and determined to do something different even for this one year, shouldn't we at least know, you know, they want to negotiate, if, if Lincolnville wants a five-year contract and Camden and Rockport want one year, or have, in, in the internal or the other committee meetings, has that discussion happened?
They won't enter into a five-year agreement with the other towns unless Camden, especially Camden.
Or the heart.
Yeah.
But Rockport is what, yeah.
And they said that.
Yes.
Which makes sense, actually.
Oh, I'm sure it does. It's just not clear which, I don't really understand how their business model works, and it's a point that's been brought up.
Do we have, do we have a trigger, excuse me, I went to Taylor, one second, do we have a trigger on an end date for this negotiation?
No. Well, I mean, yes, we do, sorry. June, June 30th.
Right. Has been communication about, obviously they can't cancel, and they know that. We, and I believe there's a certain termination clause of six months.
Six months. And there's, you know--
Mutual, right?
Right, it's a mutual. And also, there's state statute about, you know, coverage areas, and you can't just leave a cover--
Yeah, right.
But even though our, we, we have an agreement up until--
June 30.
And so--
30th, yeah.
That's not, why would they have to notify, that's, it's not like they would--
If we were to--
They're still saying that they need to notify us for 60 days.
Six months.
Six months.
A hundred.
Okay, so that contract just continues even if we don't renew it?
Usually that's how it works when you don't renew.
They can't be emergency service, they can't pull it unless they give us, they could write a letter tomorrow and give us a six-month notice from June 30th. They could do that. We could do the same thing.
Why are we even bothering, why do we even need contracts to begin with then?
This is a special contract area because of the type of service that it is. It's an emergency service. It's something that's not buying apples and oranges for somebody. It's just a--
Because there's a subsidy involved.
Yeah, that, that's, it's a whole different ballgame.
Audrey, do you need any act, sorry, Bob, I was going to ask if you need any action from us tonight.
Well, I, I think that this is all really important because, you know, given where we're at, the, the impasse that we're sort of at, we've been pushed to do this meeting on the 17th. But I agree, I agree with all of you. I have all the exact same concerns.
I'm a little confused then about the word impasse relating to the meeting. My, and perhaps, perhaps the circumstances have changed. I was under the impression that the town of Lincolnville had reached out to us and the other two towns and requested a meeting for all of us to sit down to talk about the future provision of EMS in our community, which is a fantastic idea. And I think we should do that, and I think it's necessary to do that in the near future. So I'm confused why that is being pushed into a timetable that has to do with our current contract.
Right. This is, this is the problem before that I explained to you.
When did that change?
That's always been the...
It's always been, they've been pushing us like, there's only one reason why you want to have a meeting quickly, and that's because we are in negotiation right now. And somebody's going to try to convince us to go in a different direction.
Yeah, I mean...
I would say we don't meet then until after the contract is...
We're talking about two different things. I mean, we're, Lincolnville was very clear in their letter. I think we were very clear back to them. And I think that we all agree that like, to do anything different in the future, we should all sit down and see where, you know, whether they're all on the same page, we're not on the same page, we have different ideas, let's figure out how to move forward.
Yep.
But I think we need to continue to negotiate the contract.
And also, as one of the other town managers has been talking with leadership at Northeast, they've said, well, we want to see some, I guess, one of the things that they're worried about right now, and I think it's a pretty legitimate concern, is that they won't hear any, once the contract is signed, the extension for a year, they won't hear anything from us for six months.
Right.
Which happened in the past. And then all of a sudden, there'll be this flurry of activity around, what are we going to, you know, what are we going to do? And they, you know, they'll know way too late as to what our long-term, you know, long-term plan is going to be. So...
I think we've made it clear tonight that like, we all want to sit down with our other partner in towns, but we want to make sure that our contract is negotiated first so we can have a clear conversation.
What, what was told to them through the other manager is this meeting will be the beginning of starting those, like, coming up with a schedule for starting those discussions about the long-term discussions. So, yeah.
It's a public meeting. Anything can be said. It will be recorded. It's fraught with danger when you're middle of a negotiation.
Right. So Northeast wants to use that meeting of us discussing a path forward and a process forward. They want to use that meeting as a, as a strategizing or negotiating tool for our future.
More like they want to see the outcome of that, is that at some point, they'll get to talk to all four towns together.
Why do they want to talk to all four towns together?
I don't, there's...
We, we have hurdles. We have the first...
They can make a presentation, they can send us a presentation.
Absolutely. They can come here and talk to us. But I think the first hurdle is the contract for the next year. And then, then we would absolutely agree, the faster you do that, the faster we'll sit down and include them in a certain portion of the discussion about where we're going forward.
So maybe, maybe what I can say to everyone is, the only way that Camden is going to attend this meeting on the 17th is if Northeast signs the one-year extension.
Correct.
Prior to the 17th.
Correct.
Sure.
There'll be no joint meeting until there's a signature on the Northeast contract.
Yeah.
Just, I want to reiterate this again, because I'm not usually this confused. So...
It's, there's a good, no, no, there's a good reason why you are. It is, it is confusing.
It's confusing.
It's confusing.
There's a lot of like, in, like, relationships between the towns that have come into this that, yeah.
But I want to, just so I'm saying it out loud for, I don't know, the third time, I think it's a great idea. And I thought what we were agreeing to was sitting down and talking about the future provision on EMS, like a workshop. I'm not sure when that became a process meeting to talk about how we're going to talk about future of EMS.
Let's make that happen.
Let's just simplify it. Let's sit down and talk about it. But we need to get the contract figured out first.
I, I, that's the, I got confused about the process meeting bit as well. And when they said, okay, we're going to meet on the 17th to have a process meeting, I didn't want to be the annoying one.
No, right.
Kind of nitpicking at it. But I almost did write back to them and say, I'm really confused by what a process meeting is and what are we going to...
And when you say "them," you mean Lincolnville?
The other town managers.
Other town managers.
Right. Because looking at the letters from back and forth from Lincolnville to, and the Dave Kenny's response, I'm losing track of where it all comes from.
To me.
To you. I don't...
I, I think we can cut short the conversation by just saying, what Bob said is, we will, we will have a meeting with all the other towns to discuss the future of EMS, once this contract has been extended for one year.
That sounds like a great idea.
We'd love to. We're looking forward to it.
I'd like to do it tomorrow, but we don't have the contract signed.
Oh, and another, another thing, just a small little detail. It would be, okay, so one of the things that Rockport agreed to was giving them notice by January 15th.
Right.
So that they weren't, you know, they knew at least six months ahead of time that we were planning on...
Pulling.
Renewing or not renewing.
I thought that was fair.
That is fair.
I think that's fair.
That's fair too.
So if you would like to...
Add that in.
That is...
So we have to have made a decision about something and...
We're basically giving them six months' notice whether we're going to renew or not, right?
No, we can't do that because it takes a vote. If we do, people have to vote on things. So...
It would have to be November.
We can't agree. What, what do we say? Oh, we've been talking and we're thinking about it. At what point do they need notification? When it's like voters have approved funding for something, or...
If we had a new Plan B for EMS services defined and approved by voters, it has, we'd have to decide that by January 15th, which means in retrospect, you'd have to have it all between now and whenever before the election printing. You'd have to have evaluated Plan B.
September?
Yeah, late September. You'd have to have all the numbers and the evaluation and agree it's a good way to go and say to Northeast, before January, we're going to go that direction. Alternatively, don't say anything and continue with Northeast.
Right.
Well...
It's a trigger. It's a short trigger.
Hold on. When, when's their, Rockport, when did they say, January?
January 15th.
So that's when they'll have it approved, something else approved by voters? Or that's when they'll let Northeast know if they're...
Give them the intent as to whether or not they're going to renew.
A statement of intent.
Do you know why they picked that specific date?
Six months out from...
From July.
When are we going to know?
That's from July.
But is that just, I don't, I don't understand that timeline. There's no way we could have...
I don't think we need to jump at that right this point. Right now, we want to sign contract, and that's the bottom line, period. And I'm not sure, at some point, we can discuss certainly a trigger date. I think that's fair. Should we do it 15, 16, 17, or February 1st? I don't know.
Or it could even be 180 days or something like that.
Exactly.
Are they trying to force, is Rockport saying they're going to get any process that needs to be done, they're going to get done by that date? Or are they just saying, if we, if we start thinking about putting something else out to voters, we're going to let you know? Because if something goes to voters, then Northeast is going to know.
I watched the Rockport meeting when they discussed this.
Yep.
My interpretation of it was that they wanted to assuage, they wanted to attempt to assuage Northeast's concern, because we're, we're saying, we can't, we can't agree to put you on a ballot. We can't agree to guarantee that we can have you at town meeting. We can't agree to these things contractually. So I think that the idea that I perceived it from Rockport was, instead of that, we'll let you know six months ahead of time whether or not we're going to be able to renew with you.
That's correct. That's where I was trying to be.
We have a budget process, though, that it's all tied in with all these other things. I just don't...
That trigger is July 15th to January 15th. That's six months. But this is June 4th. This contract can't be negotiated in the next two or three months. It's got to get negotiated now. So to me, worrying about the January 15th thing or not is, Northeast has got to understand, we're expecting a contract, we're expecting it now. We've got legal advice that says we can't touch what you wrote before. What's the next action? And it's got to be now. This meeting thing with others, that's got to come after the negotiation. I think we all, I hear we all agree with that. That just has to, that just, and then hopefully, hopefully, we can get Northeast to the table to talk about what works here. Period.
And did we need to be figuring out some kind of a backup plan if this really does? I mean, if Northeast is just, just to...
I think that could be worked out, but I'm, when I jump to that.
I think Chief has been working on that.
Hello, Chief.
Okay.
But I...
Training out for...
But I, I don't want, I don't want, that sounds like we're, that sounds like we're ready to pull a trigger. I don't think we're at that point.
Of course, we're not, but we do, it sounds like...
I mean, no one's hoping it comes to that.
No, we don't want to do that. That would be, everybody would be furious, and we would sabotage a potentially positive thing by...
Yes, yes.
But it sound, it just with all the warning signs, we'd be foolish not to like, you know, be...
Fair.
Right. Yeah.
We, yeah, we do have...
What a worst-case scenario look like and...
Yeah, I mean...
We have backups.
We have a, we have a backup. It's not...
Want to take, probably.
We would, we don't want it. It's going to be expensive.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, you're a negotiator for this contract. And I don't know when the last communication you had with Northeast, but it's going to come across really plain and simple. Fundamentally, we have to have a contract, you can even put a date on if you want to. We have to have a contract or we don't. And then we'll have to decide whether we give a six-month trigger, or eight-month trigger, or nine-month, whatever the heck it is. This, this, this whole process has got, that, to the process meeting, having more discussion on process in a process that's already screwed up, frankly, is not, is not a good process. It's, we're going around circles. We're not, the towns, and I understand the small towns have a serious financial consideration here. I understand that. And we all are sensitized to that. So I don't want to poo-poo that their concern is not real. It is. And we want, we will work with them, as our letter said. We have no problem doing that. But right now, I, I think we've got to, we've really got to get serious with Northeast and get this thing done by, by the end of the month.
Yeah.
And, you know, then we can have our, we'll have our meeting.
Another, another very difficult thing is, they are not taking my calls or calling me back. So it's been very, very frustrating and difficult to try and...
Nice way for an ambulance company to operate.
They'll respond by email, but they won't talk to you?
I've called a few times and left messages, and I just...
No return.
No return.
Again, put your best foot forward. That's not your best foot forward.
This, it's, I just can't even, I can't even emphasize how frustrating this has been from a number of fronts.
Also, maybe we should say, if Northeast wants to come and present something to us, they're all, you know, they're always welcome.
I mean, they had no problem coming the night that...
Right.
Rockland came.
No, they had no problem.
And speaking to everybody. I mean...
There's internal conflict going on, and Northeast is obvious without even knowing the company. Otherwise, they would respond. So I would suggest you just, in the most emphatic terms, say, look, you know, we're going to make a decision. And if we, and if we don't hear from you in the next week or so, we're going to have to decide where Camden's going, because you're not cooperating with us. And just, that's just the way it is. Now, when or if, if we were to do any kind of a notice thing, that's, that's a future decision. We don't want to, you know, I want to be clear, this, just not beating up on Northeast, but we just, we just deserve the courtesy of having a contract negotiation discussions between the two parties. And I'm sure we can work something out, but we have to work it out quickly.
Go ahead, move on.
We can.
Okay.
We can. Two, I'm going to jump to a convenience wastewater commissioner so that we can get past the quarterly billings.
I was going to say, this, before we leave Select Board, I want to say to everybody one last thing. Jazz and June, everybody, starts a week from Friday, and it's wonderful. Number two, next, next week, next Tuesday is Election Day, and next Wednesday is our town meeting, so please go out and vote. And if I'm fortunate enough to be re-elected to Select Board next week, I'm looking forward to it. It's, and unfortunately, I just want to make apologies. I have business in New York on the 18th, so I will not be here for the next Select Board meeting, which I hate missing them. So I'll see everybody in July.
Sounds good, Mark. Thank you.
Okay.
A motion to convene as...
Motion that we adjourn as Select Board and convene as wastewater commissioners.
A favor, 5-0. We have the, the action to approve the quarterly billings for January 18, 2019 through April 17, 2019, in the amount of $279,083.04.
I make a motion, we approve, unless there's some discussion. I make a motion, we approve quarterly billings and certificate of commitment of super bills for January 18, 2019 through April 17, 2019, in the amount of $279,083.04.
Second.
Discussion. I was in favor, 5-0. We should then...